All right, Acting Chairman, we are on the air.
Thank you very much. At 7:02 PM.
Seven thirty-two.
Yeah, thank you. Seven thirty-two PM. The, I'm calling to order the Board of Adjustment, Special Meeting and Hearing as of this date. Call to Order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard Board Procedures. Any meeting, hearing conducted by the Board is quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments may be limited to issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting, hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off. Announcement is made that, as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the Zoning Board of Adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting, hearing of the Board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of Allegiance. Carrie, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Apologies, Mr. Aronio. I didn't think you were coming tonight.
There's a seat right here. I'll take this one.
Yes, I'll get your name tag out right now and mark you as present.
Thank you.
Well, we're just about to take roll anyway. Perfect timing. What's that? Yeah, do you mind? All right. Chairman, shall I take the roll?
Please do.
Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
Mr. Zidrowski.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Zauri, say it one more time for me, TJ.
Here, Zawarkay.
Zawarkay, thank you. I'll get it one of these days, TJ. Vice Chairman Grosskow.
Here.
And Chairman Correct is recused this evening. Chairman, Acting Chairman Grosskow, we have a forum. May I also add, I'm sorry before we go further, for members of the public that are here, our Board Planner is Elizabeth Lahaney, and our acting, and our engineer this evening is Rob Behringer, and our Board Attorney is John DeLuca. Reports, copies of the reports from both our Board Engineer and our Board Planner are up front, and with addition to two other reports that Verizon submitted that did not go onto the website. So there should be extra copies for everyone if you need them. Thank you.
Yeah. So, business is resolutions. Did we get resolutions for Armstrong and?
Yep.
Did everybody have a chance to read them?
Yes.
Any questions, any comments on the Armstrong application, 25-13Z?
I don't.
Questions or comments?
No.
Did I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Um, let's see. Mr. Aronio, you, because I did not know you were attending this evening, so I did not send you the resolutions, so...
It's okay. I don't have to, I have not read them.
Okay.
So I will not vote on them.
Okay. I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Okay. So we have Mr. Zidrowski?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Grosskow?
Upstaying. Okay, for resolution for Ricardo G. and Sandra Oliveria, application 25-15Z. Have you all read them? Any questions, comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Was that Mr. Zidrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Zidrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskow?
Upstaying.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, Board Business before us is application, preliminary and final major site plan, use variance, bulk variance, block 12304, lot 1, zone P, 1891A, Long Hill Road, application number 25-17Z. Applicant proposes to install a 104-foot tall monopole and emergency backup generator.
Counsel, before you begin, I just, for the benefit of the Board, the applicant and the public, I just want to make a few statements about the procedure of tonight's hearing. Obviously, the applicant is here to present this application. I will let the applicant describe what that application is and the relief they are seeking. But in terms of the procedure and how things will go tonight, the applicant's attorney will likely provide some opening statements here. He will then have his witness, one by one sworn in to testify. Counsel for the applicant will then question that witness, and that witness will provide answers. Then the Board will have an opportunity to question the witness. Following the Board's opportunity to question the witness, the public will have an opportunity to question that witness. And that will be the time for questions on the witness's testimony or area of expertise. It will not be a time for you to testify or provide comments or concerns about the application, only questions. Once the applicant is through all of its witnesses, I anticipate that the Board might have some additional follow-up questions, and then the, then the public will have an opportunity to provide comment, concerns, what, support, whatever they might have to share about their thoughts or any testimony they might have about the application. At that time, I will, the Board will, I will swear in any members of the public who do want to comment or question or provide testimony. And at the conclusion, the applicant's counsel will have an opportunity to provide his closing statements. Then the Board will deliberate, and hopefully tonight, vote on the application. So that's how we anticipate the procedure to go tonight, and with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant's attorney.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Frank Ferraro with PermaFerraro Stamos here on behalf, here on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless. Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, we are here tonight for a use variance, a height variance, bulk variances, and design waivers in order to install a new wireless telecommunication facility at the Millington Volunteer Fire Department garage property, not the main property where the firehouse is located, in the P Public Use Zone. This is in the 12304, block 12304, lot 1, zone, block, block 12304, lot 1, is the property. The installation will include a 100-foot monopole, 104-foot to the lightning rod. Most of the equipment will be placed inside one of the bays of the existing fire department garage, and there will be an emergency backup generator outside fenced in next to the compound. We do have either four or five witnesses for you tonight. Verizon has an area of deficient coverage in and around the township in this particular area which is seeking to address. The applicant has sought out existing structures, but simply could not find anything of sufficient height in order to provide service and remedy their, their gap in their coverage. As a result, we have, we are proposing this pole at the fire department. The township does not have a wireless telecommunication ordinance, as I'm sure the Board knows. So the applicant is left to find a reasonable location under, under New Jersey case law, and we believe fully that the firehouse location is not only a reasonable location, but a location that is particularly suited for the use. There is a existing whip antenna at the firehouse, behind it, and potentially down the road if the monopole were approved, potentially the fire department could relocate their communication antenna to the tower in order to improve emergency services communications. So that would be available in part of our application. In addition, Verizon has had the opportunity to confirm with the Long Hill Township Police Department that in fact, the police do use Verizon service in their cruisers and also, you know, for the primary communications, so there would definitely be a benefit to the facility for that, for that reason. So our first witness is going to be our radio frequency...
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just want clarification on that last point. When you said that it's available to the PD, do you mean the tower's available to them or the Verizon service itself is available to them?
The service, so they will benefit from the improved service.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
For that question. Yeah, so they will, they will benefit from the improved service.
Thank you.
I have a question, too.
Sure.
I thought I heard you say that Verizon would be using the structure, meaning the existing structure, to the fire department?
No, they, Verizon researched this area to find an existing structure of sufficient height, but there simply wasn't anything. Right now, the fire department has a singular whip antenna that's on a, almost a utility, a wooden utility pole behind their, behind the building. That is not something that's A, tall enough, or B, structurally sound enough to be used as a, as a rock.
I, I thought I heard you say you, that they were going to be using the fire department's structure.
No, so my, what I said was...
With, for their equipment to be in.
So, well, yeah, our equipment cabinets will be placed inside the garage that's across...
The barn where all the rest of their equipment is.
The barn, you're right.
And what kind of protection does the rest of the fire department's equipment have with your equipment sharing the same structure?
Well, I mean, I'll let our engineer...
Sure.
...go through the site plan, you know, what equipment's going to be in there and whatnot, so...
I mean, we've got Board members here who've kept lawnmowers in other people's sheds, right? So, you know, if your lawnmower would catch some guy's shed on fire, you know, it's your lawnmower in their shed. So that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Verizon has some sort of responsibility to the fire department, should it be damaging the equipment that the township has paid for?
Sure.
And is stored in that garage?
Well, I mean, I can tell you this much. Verizon does have a lease agreement with the, with the fire department, and pursuant to that, at least, they are responsible for the maintenance of the equipment and any damage that's caused as a result of their equipment being compromised. So now that I understand your question further, yes, Verizon would have a responsibility, not just for their own equipment.
Yeah.
But to that entire structure, should something happen to it as a result of their equipment being damaged.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Sure. So, just to give an outline of what we propose to demonstrate to the Board, we will have our radio frequency engineer to go over the gap in the service coverage in this area as well as how the proposed tower...
Apologies, apparently this mic's not coming through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's not.
It's me? This one's better? Oh, yeah, that's better. Okay.
Do your best Frank Sinatra.
That's right. So we'll have a radio frequency engineer to go through the need for this particular site at this location. We will also have our civil engineer who will go through the site plan and the improvements that are being proposed. We have our radio frequency emissions expert who will testify to the fact that if the tower were approved, it would operate well within FCC emissions requirements. And then finally, we have our professional planner who will testify to the criteria for the granting of the use variance, the height variance, the underlying bulk variances, and the design waivers. So, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any initial questions, we would call our first witness, who's Ron Lukach, he's our radio frequency engineer.
So I have some questions. Maybe you're not the appropriate person, but I'll start and see what you say.
Sure.
And then if you want me to direct it to someone else, I'll do that at the time.
Sure.
But I just want to understand how you chose this site. Like, you mentioned earlier, I think, that you looked at alternate sites, and, and they weren't really considered, or maybe they were considered, but you found them not acceptable. So maybe you could take us through the process of finding a site, what the criteria is that you looked at, whether it's the location, the signal, or any, or any of those things, and, and tell us what you found, you know? Like, I'm thinking of locating it to a different area, right? So you probably thought that as well. I think that's what you're saying. So maybe you could say what sites you looked at and why other specific sites were not acceptable.
Sure. So, I mean, I can speak generally on these terms. We will have experts who, or people can testify directly to that, but anecdotally, I can tell you this. So Verizon Wireless, when they're looking for a new site, or when they have identified an area of need in their existing network, they send out site acquisition to try to find a location in that area to remedy it. Generally speaking, it's not just unique to Verizon, it's really unique to, it's really typical of the injur, of the industry that you go out and try to identify first existing structures that you can utilize rather than building a new pole. So Verizon sends out their site acquisition consultant. They look in the area where RF has identified the need, and to see if they can find a structure of suitable height. So Verizon did that here. Subject to the testimony that you're going to hear, just to give you a primer, I guess, they, they went and they investigated the enclave property, which is in your light industrial zone across Division Street. That was one of the altern, alternates that was looked at. Landlord was ultimately not interested. Apparently, there's a 140-unit development that's been approved there, mixed-use commercial, didn't have any room for it. Landlord, just, you know, they were not interested, but they were approached. My understanding that Verizon has an office building on Division Street, I don't have the exact address.
I think most people are aware of the...
Yeah, you know the area, so...
Central Station, right?
Sure, exactly. Thank you. So that was investigated, obviously, because the applicant is Verizon. The property just doesn't have the room for a compound tower and, you know, just the apparatus that we, that goes into a standard wireless telecommunication site. And so that site was ruled out just for a lack of available space. That site is almost adjacent to our site, very close. There was also, I believe it was 84 Division Street that was looked at. Let me just give you the, I want to make sure I gave you the right address.
That was fine, a few minutes ago.
Yes, well, 84 Division Avenue, I was almost right. Owned by CP certified, which, to my understanding, has a multitude of, of commercial-type uses on it. My understanding is that landlord was interested, but Verizon felt that with the intensity of the uses going on in that property, there really wasn't a location that they could be utilized without pushing the tower all the way to one corner, which the property is, is surrounded by residential on three sides. So that site was considered and was an option. I think that's in the O Office Zone. That's not in the light industrial. And then finally, the, the, the fire department property, which is in a P Public Use Zone, was approached, and the landlord was interested. They had this unique situation where they not only owned the fire department lot, but they owned the lot across Commerce Street, which is in an, one of those unimproved gravel street, where they had a shed that was, or a garage, I will call it, a garage or barn that's underutilized, and they had some space in there that we can put our equipment in, which was a fairly unique benefit, to be able to hide that. And then they had some room for a tower and the generator and a fence compound, and it, it seemed to work. It's a non-residential zone, and that's how really we came to that location, started negotiations with them. Lease in place, now file the application to come before you. So that downtown area, if you will, that commercial area, it's bounded by, I think there's three non-residential zones. It's the P Public Zone, it's the Light Industrial Zone, which is now basically the enclave. It's a mixed-use development, or approved for that. And then we had the Office Zone with the, the series of commercial uses on it, owned by JP certified, and then the Verizon store, which is also, I believe, in the, that's in, that's in the Business Zone, and then the P Zone with the Fire Department. So Verizon looked at all the alternative properties, really, that are not zone residential in this area, and that's how we came to the, to where we are.
Okay, just have one follow-up.
Sure.
Did you investigate the railroad, all of that right-of-way that they have, the trestle, the catenary devices?
Sure.
Can you piggyback on any of that up there?
Verizon?
So, just in light of some of the questions that have been raised during Council's opening arguments, I just want to advise the Board and remind the Board that obviously you can rely on the statements made by Counsel, but you, you should really rely and focus on the statements that are made by, by the sworn witnesses. Obviously, an attorney is required to make truthful statements under our rules of professional conduct, but they should be supported by evidence, which are the, which will be the testimony and the exhibits relied on by the applicant's witnesses, and obviously, the, what will be presented during the applicant's presentation. So I, I think that the questions that have been raised so far are obviously very relevant and prudent, but I just want to remind the Board that these questions really likely should be directed towards witnesses.
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel, for your guidance. Just so you know why I'm asking the questions to this person, I see this as the person representing the business. So if there's another business representative, I will gladly speak to them, and that's why I opened my questions by saying, if you're not the appropriate person, I'd like to speak with that person.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't mean to take over this meeting, I'm like a...
That's okay, and I don't mean to ask so many questions at the beginning. We don't usually do this, but for obvious reasons, I think we should.
Obviously, I'm not testifying, this is part of my opening statement, this is...
Right, and I understand, I'm looking for the background, how we got to where we are right here. That's what I want to know.
But to answer your last question, if I may, since you raised it...
Yes, thank you.
Verizon does not use catenary lines. None of the carriers use...
Or railroad right-of-way.
Railroad right-of-ways. At one point, they did, I mean, some 10 to 15 years ago, but no longer, because you can't maintenance them, and...
Okay.
To get somebody up there to work on them, you'd have to shut...
I'm not even only talking catenary, I'm talking about the whole, all that real estate everywhere.
Correct. No. They do not utilize railroads anymore, and typically speaking, they're not even made available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a different question, and maybe you can help with it. I'm not sure, it's not, it's, you mentioned the parties, it's Verizon, right? And the landlord, I'm sorry, I don't know who the landlord is.
The landlord is Millington Volunteer Fire Department.
So I don't know the structure of, isn't that part of Long Hill Township? Isn't, so is it...
They're private. They own it. They own it privately.
Okay. I just keep thinking that it's the Township Committee that buys, you know, fire trucks and stuff like that, no?
They buy the trucks, but the members bought the buildings years ago.
Okay.
The real estate, and, and built the buildings themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're volunteers, so they're not paid by the township, right? Okay.
I mean, that's another site selection, you know, criteria that we'll testify to. You know, the carriers do look for municipal property when they can. This is not technically municipal property, although it has a municipal emergency service use operating there.
And just to expand on that, for, for the Board's information, for the public information, if this were publicly-owned property, the applicant would not be before this Board, because they would be exempt from zoning. So they would be able to just construct whatever they wanted to construct, as long as the governing body agreed with it.
Yeah.
But they, there would not be a, a public hearing, they would not require variance or anything like that.
Right. Well, you, you touched on a couple other possible sites, they were all kind of privately-owned. Were there any municipal sites in all of Long Hill Township that were considered?
Not within the area of the deficient coverage. So there may be other areas of Long Hill Township that still need to be addressed, but for this particular gap in Verizon service coverage, there are no municipal alternatives within that gap that could be used to, to address it. So this was the second-best thing, which is almost like a quasi-municipal use, if you will. So there will all obviously be benefits to the Volunteer Fire Department from the, from the tower, but wouldn't necessarily go, wouldn't flow to the town directly. There's no, there's no lease directly with the township of Long Hill.
Yep.
Okay. So I probably spoke more than I was, definitely more than I was planning to, so if there's any other question, unless there's any other questions, I can call our first witness, Ron Lukach, who can go through what the need exactly is in the Verizon network. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lukach, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, it's Ron Lukach, L-U-K-A-C-H.
All right, and can you please give the Board the benefit of your background credentials explaining your expertise?
Yes, gladly. Good evening, members. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have 29 years of experience as an RF engineer. It's capacity currently employed by PureCon Solutions at Butler, New Jersey, as a senior RF engineer, Systems Integration Manager, and I've appeared before other boards throughout the state of New Jersey with regard to RF necessity on behalf of carriers, T-Mobile, Verizon, and have been accepted before those boards.
And is your license current in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I recommend that Mr. Lukach be recognized as an expert in the field of radio frequency engineering.
So recognized.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Lukach, Verizon Wireless is an FCC licensed provider of telecommunication services? Is that correct? I'm going to yell.
Share?
What you're saying, what you're saying is more important.
Yes, Verizon is licensed by the FCC to provide wireless voice and data services in and around the general area and throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as other states. They hold many licenses by the FCC in different bands, 700 megahertz band, 850 megahertz band, 1900 megahertz band, 2100 megahertz band, and the 3700 megahertz band, and they're licensed by the FCC to provide services in all of those bands.
And we're going to be using the initials RF, that stands for radio frequency, correct?
Yes.
All right, just so the record's clear. And have you performed an RF analysis of the surrounding site where the proposed Verizon facility is going?
Oh, yes, I co-authored the report, the RF report, if you want me to refer to that.
Sure. Let's mark this report as A1. A1 is a report by PureCon Solutions entitled Independent Radio Frequency Report Regarding a Proposed Verizon, Verizon Millington II Wireless Facility dated October 27, 2025. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
So this, uh, this report is in the board's packet, hopefully. Was this report prepared by you or under your supervision?
Yes, it was.
So for the sake of the record, we will mark that as A1, since you mentioned it.
Thank you. Thank you.
If we could just refer to it as the RF report, since the, uh, title is a little bit lengthy.
So, uh, Mr. Lukach, could you just, in general terms, describe the need, um, for this site and why Verizon's here?
Uh, yes. So, uh, for this, in preparation for this hearing, uh, as part of the RF report that was conducted, we evaluated Verizon's existing network. As part of the report, I have exhibits. That is to say, you evaluate the existing coverage that they provide, whether there is in fact a gap or a lack of service, identify the area where a site must be placed to ostensibly maximize, um, the deficiency and limit the amount of wireless facility locations. Uh, and then address and, you know, provide the, um, the statistics on what that proposed site does and compare it to other alternatives, um, and why other, other approaches or alternative sites or locations or technologies would not be, um, equal in terms of their ability to, to do that.
And before you get into specifics, uh, did your professional analysis conclude that Verizon does have an area of deficient coverage in and around the proposed site?
Yes, it does.
And did your analysis also conclude that Verizon needs a monopole at a height of 100 feet? In order to address that area of deficient coverage?
Yes, the information will show that as well.
And in your opinion, is that the minimum height necessary?
Yes, it is.
Can you describe some of the symptoms that a user may experience when they enter an area of deficient coverage?
Yeah, well, simply stated, um, an area of, um, lack of reliable coverage, and I'm gonna focus on reliable in-building service, that's residential in-building service. Not to say that there's, uh, not mobile coverage or in-street coverage, uh, but reliable in-building service is that a user may experience, um, difficulty accessing the network, dropped calls, interruption of service, um, and not the robust network that they expect, you know, being a user and a, uh, being a user of the service.
And, um, in your professional experience, is it standard in the wireless industry to use propagation tools in order to identify gaps in coverage and come up with means of addressing them?
Yes, the, uh, computer simulations are, are used industry-wide. Uh, the one used by Verizon, uh, the name of it is the tool, planning tool is called ATOL. It's also used by T-Mobile, um, and it's industry standard. Um, and it's used for planning purposes. It shows existing coverage with a very high level of accuracy. And it's also used to evaluate, uh, new sites and what they would essentially do at different locations, different heights, uh, to a, a pretty good level of accuracy in my, in my experience.
And, uh, you have performed a computer simulated, um, or you have prepared, I should say, propagation exhibits demonstrating the, uh, area of deficient coverage around this site?
Yes.
And now are the exhibits you're about to testify to, are they contained in the report that we marked as A1?
Yes, the three exhibits, the three exhibits, um, I'm, I will talk to are, are in the report.
Okay, so no, should we mark them or no need?
I don't think that's necessary.
So, Mr. Lukach, um, could you just describe, um, where the existing site is on your first exhibit, as well as the first tier's, uh, on-air Verizon sites?
And when you do that, can you please, uh, move your easel so that if anybody from the audience would like to come up and, uh, take a look, so we can see it and perhaps they can, over here, you usually do.
I'm trying to see what's visual on TV and here.
So they can see it, but as long as we understand where, yeah, they're at that old. So we know where on the, on the page is talking.
Is that sufficient?
I think so. Can, can you folks all see it?
Well, members of the public are welcome to come up.
Okay, fine.
You're welcome to come up and look at the exhibits if you wish.
Can the members of the board see it? Okay, then we have some.
Are you following along with the, the report package?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I believe there were copies of the report by the front door, too.
Yes.
The public.
They may not be in color, but, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so the first exhibit I wish to, uh, to talk to is labeled as Exhibit A. It's titled Verizon Wireless Coverage From Existing On-Air Sites With That Subject Site At The 700 Megahertz LTE. I mentioned that 700 megahertz is one of the frequency bands that, uh, that Verizon provides, is licensed by the FCC to provide services for. Um, there, there are lower bands, just, just by background. The lower bands tend to propagate further or cover, uh, further than the mid-bands that they're also licensed for. So when analyzing Verizon's wireless, uh, service, if the low bands show deficiency, the mid-bands would also show even a greater deficiency because the signal levels decay faster. So if there's, if it's present for one, it's present for, for the others. So in fact, by presenting this, it's the best case of what Verizon has, um, in identifying what their current service is. So the Exhibit A has a number of items on it. Basically, it's a roadmap. It's a depiction, geographic map of the, uh, of the area around the subject site. By way of orientation, uh, north is, is up. Um, there are, there are streets that run through the area. They have labels on them. Um, I-78 being to the south, the red line, and other roads, uh, being identified. Um, there are some other items that I'd like to, uh, read as well, if they're record. The yellow triangular items around the, in a more or less of a clockwise fashion are the existing sites that Verizon is, is present on, and currently providing coverage to the, to the overall area. And, um, I'll introduce what those locations are, the heights. And if they're co-locations, for the most part, they are all co-locations with other carriers. In the center of the, um, the map, uh, identified by a pink dot is the subject site. And then there's a color, uh, a dark green color that is representative of the reliable in-building service level, which is a minus 95 dBm. That's a mathematical calculation to determine what the reliable level is, adding up all the systems gains and losses, et cetera. And it's consistent with industry standards for, uh, establishing that minimum value for reliable service.
And this is reliable in-building service?
Yes, and a reliable in-building residential service is, is shown in green, dark green. So I would just like to, uh, introduce what, what these sites are. They're labeled at the very top of the, uh, the map, starting approximately at 12 o'clock. Uh, it's a site called Millington. And that's, uh, and I'll, and I'll talk about how far these sites are away from the, from the subject site. But it's 1.3 miles away from the subject site. That is a lattice tower. It's a co-location. And, um, Verizon is present, and they have a center line of the antennas at 150 feet. Moving, uh, clockwise to about 3 o'clock. There's another existing site, Sterling is the name. Uh, that's a 120-foot centerline antenna for Verizon. It's a monopole, existing monopole. And that's also a co-location with other carriers. Uh, moving towards 4 or 5 o'clock, again in a clockwise direction, is a site Warren 4. That site is, Verizon has their antennas at 90 feet. That is a lattice tower. There's also a co-location. Multiple carriers are there. Uh, moving to about 6 o'clock is a site called Bernard's Township. And that is a rooftop. That's actually the Everest Insurance Company. It's a 57-foot. I believe Verizon is the only one there. And again, still moving in a clockwise direction, or I guess west, uh, Warren 5. That's a 108-foot centerline antenna for, uh, for Verizon. That is a monopole. That is also a co-location with other carriers. And then finally, up at the top, uh, left-hand corner, is a site called Basking Ridge. And that is, uh, Verizon is at 95 feet, centerline. That's a stealth, uh, flagless pole that's there. I don't know if that it's co-located. Other co-locators are there. It's sealed up. I don't, can't for certain say. So as you can see, all of the existing sites, uh, Verizon is co-located with other carriers. Um, and the coverage that is shown, if you look in the center of the map where the subject site is, uh, there is no dark green. It kind of breaks up in some, some spots. So in, the indication is that there is no reliable in-building, uh, residential service. And therefore, that establishes, first of all, in an evaluation, is there a service gap? Does it need to be remedied? That's the first step. The answer to this is yes, there is one. So then goes about what are the next steps and how do you, uh, address it appropriately and efficiently?
Just for the record, could you, uh, describe the parameters of the gap service of it?
Oh, yes. Yes, thank you. It was on page two. Yeah, so in totality, uh, the service gap is approximately 1.5 square miles. The affected areas are approximately 0.42 miles along, um, Northfield Road, south of the intersection of, of, uh, Long Hill Road to Valley Road in the center map, moving, uh, top-down. Uh, 0.5 miles along Division Avenue. From, uh, from Long Hill Road to Valley Road, again, kind of a parallel street, uh, from Long Hill Road at the top to Valley Road at the bottom. 1.57 miles along Haas Road. Um, west of Division Avenue to Stonehouse Road. And that is running more or less east to west in this area. I know it changes names at some point and then back to Haas Road, but, uh, that, that's the, that's the stretch area that I'm referring to. Uh, 0.56 miles along River Road from, uh, Valley Road to, uh, is it Haas? Haas Road, yep. That's, that's the road that kind of runs from northwest, I'm sorry, southwest to northeast. And then, uh, 1 mile along Valley Road from Bernard Drive to Northfield Road. And that would be Valley Road. That would be this area. Bernard Drive to the, to the west. Uh, Valley Road continues here, goes down and then comes across east. So that is the general description of the area, um, and the distances. And according to, I believe, and I'm gonna wanna correct the report at this time for the population. I think there's a reference, and in the report, the RF report, it said, according to 2020 census data.
One second, we have a question from the board.
Yeah, so, I mean, you might have been just getting to that. How many residential, do you know how many residential buildings?
I'm just gonna speak to that, yes, yes.
Um, I have some other follow-up, but if you were gonna get to that.
Okay, yes. So I just wanna make a correction, which is in the RF submitted report, there's a reference to 2020 census data. And the numbers that are actually in there are 2010 census data. I have both sets. But I just wanted to make that clarification and correction for the record. Okay, so I'll stay with the numbers that are in there. Just be, just be consistent. And I can update them to 2020 census numbers. But just note that the numbers that are referenced in the report and then the ability for the, the site are 2010 census numbers. So I'll just introduce those for consistency. So according to 2010 census data, uh, 2,190 residents are, are affected by that area, that gap area that I just spoke about, the 1.5 square miles. Um, also within that area is the Millington Elementary School on Northfield Road. It's about a quarter mile from the proposed site, and that would fall into the area as well.
Is the train station also in this location, as you know?
I don't believe, I don't believe the... I don't believe it's on this map.
And then, Mr. Lukach, in your expert opinion, is this the size of this gap? Is this a significant gap in Verizon's, uh, service coverage?
Yes, I would categorize it as a significant gap in, in reliable service due to the size and then in the, um, and the number of residents affected.
And before we move forward to show the propagation to be gained from the site if it were approved, um, with respect to the surrounding on-air sites, is there anything that could be done to those sites to provide coverage into this gap area?
No, the answer is, well, the answer is no. Uh, they're, you know, of, of a decent height of themselves, between 100 and, between 90 feet. Other than rooftop, the towers are between 90 and 150 feet. And give it a distance, and I'll give the average distance of the sites. Um, and from RF perspective, uh, RF just has a, a finite range that it can provide service. And after that, it's just, it's too far away. So, um, you can see by the distance, uh, of the existing sites and where the proposed site, they're all relatively, you know, pretty, pretty similar. So this is essentially how, uh, how far apart sites can, can be. And, um, and is representative of what that frequency is capable of doing.
And based upon this exhibit, uh, is the proposed site centrally located between the, uh, the first level on-air sites that Verizon has?
Yes, it's, it's almost essentially, uh, pretty close to the center, I would say.
And is there a benefit to that, uh, from a radio frequency perspective?
Well, yes. So, uh, obviously, at the outset, I said, um, to establish or evaluate whether there's existing coverage gap, um, and then identify what that is. Uh, the benefit of being in the center of that area is that you would maximize any site's ability or, you know, uh, ability to, to address the coverage from one location as opposed to two. A site located somewhere else, having again, limited capability to provide coverage, would then open up or still leave another area to be addressed at a future time. So location is very important in addition to height in terms of effectuating what the, what the service gap, uh, is.
So in your opinion, is this proposed location an efficient location for minimizing the number of sites in the township?
Yes.
Is there anything else that you wanted to address on this Exhibit A, which is actually a page in the report, um, that's been marked as A1? Anything else on here that you need to address?
Not at this time.
Can I, I just wanted to follow up. I'm sorry. I have a few questions, and I apologize. Just, just for a point of clarification, the other sites with the yellow, is, is the angle at which that yellow, the yellow, uh, I guess, pie piece facing, is that relevant? Is that some sort of, that there is, is that the, the way the RF is, is going? I don't, I don't really know.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I should have explained the pie pieces are really, um, typically cellular carriers will form, uh, will, uh, stick up three sets of, or groups, arrays of antennas, and they'll point them in three different directions or where it makes sense mostly to concentrate, um, service. So when, um, the cellular service is first being out, obviously it was along highways and roads or where more traffic would be gained, et cetera. Uh, but that is essentially what tells you which, where the antennas are pointing.
Okay. And, and this antenna, how would that compare? Would it look more like a Basking Ridge 2A? Um, in terms of the way it's radiating? The, I mean, if it was built, what would it look like on this map?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll show you that, and I guess in another exhibit.
Okay.
I don't know if the, uh, I have, I have the advertisements written down. I don't know if they're depicted on the, uh, on the exhibit, but I can certainly explain that.
So it would seem, obviously, I'm no expert on this, but it would seem that the proximity to the site is not necessarily the only, uh, the, the only, um, condition that allows for, for good reception. Because there's a, there's a, I don't know how large of a white area. I guess it's a small white area right adjacent to the Basking Ridge site. So just having proximity to a tower does not necessarily mean you're gonna get the reception, this green reset, level of reception. That's correct.
No, so if everything was flat and all the conditions were the same, you'd essentially see a circle around everything, and everything would have the same radius or diameter. But other factors affect RF, including terrain.
Okay.
So, um, there are, there are a number of factors. Primarily terrain is what, is what you'll see, and you'll see white spots in between existing sites. And that's just because the height of a, of a wireless facility, as the elevation goes up and it goes down, the RF doesn't penetrate that.
And, and I know this is on, this is, you know, either black or white, green or white, uh, depending on what you're looking at. So the green is a greater than, I don't know what that really means, 95 dBm. That's a, that's an industry standard. Can you speak in certain, in terms of, say, what we might know in terms of my phone? Like, does that mean that I get four bars or something like that? Or how, how does that, how does that translate into what a normal person holding a phone might know?
That's a good question. I get that asked a lot, too. Uh, but there are a number of factors that actually go into that. Uh, the design standard for Verizon is N95. But there are other quality factors such as, because these frequencies are reused, sort of reused at the same sites. So areas where there's no reliable signal, you could still have some signal, I mentioned, it maybe in, in vehicle or in street. But there's a amount of overlap- in vehicle or in street, but there's a amount of overlapping signals that are competing, like FM broadcast stations, and you're caught between two of them, you can't make out either one. So, again, it would be dropped calls, it would be in poor service areas, again, outside of reliable signal levels, you may have the indication of five, well, not five bars, but you may get a spinning circle if you're trying to download something or whatever. So there are other service affecting items, based upon those factors. So it's not just the reliable in-building. That's meant to do is to provide what we call a dominant server, and if there's not a dominant server, that means all the other sites are trying to compete, and service is poor.
But the people in the white area aren't necessarily getting no service, they just have what you would consider non-reliable service.
Unreliable residential in-building service, correct. Correct.
Because, I mean, I don't live on this map, but I know my service, I don't know how my service compares to this. It's unreliable in-building service as well, but I, you know, I can't, I don't have a point of comparison, so that's why I was asking you what that really meant. So, there could be shades of green here. If we wanted to, you might be able to say, all right, these people are kind of less unreliable than others, or is it, is it a black or white issue? You're either reliable or you're unreliable. Like, is there, are there shades of gray? Like, I'm certain somebody out in the middle of, you know, the middle of Wyoming or something has much less reliable service than someone who lives in this white area, you would probably say, right? I mean, I don't know, maybe Wyoming has really good service, but I, since it's flat and whatever, but there's probably some areas of the country that, where service is considered to be nonexistent, as opposed to just unreliable. That's why, I'm just wondering, because you only have green or white, but there's, there could be some shades, is what I'm kind of getting at. Is that the case, or is that, am I totally off base?
Well, the computer simulation is, like I said, it's very accurate in terms of showing what the existing service is, and evaluating other sites as the, as a network expands. Again, it doesn't mean that if you go right south of Long Hill Road, exactly at that location that's shown in white, that there's not unreliable building service, okay? So there's a little bit of give and take, not much, but it is highly reliable in terms of what it depicts. And there are large areas which just show unreliable coverage, doesn't mean no coverage, doesn't mean coverage not in vehicle, it just means from, for a user that's at home, at the end of the day, trying to use their phone, it's unreliable from an engineering perspective. A subjective observation may be, hey, sometimes I have service, sometimes I don't, so.
And I know you, you're here for Verizon, but you mentioned that a lot of these are co-located poles. Are you aware, so, I guess, are you aware of another provider that has, or does, essentially, if any provider came before us, they would show the, almost the similar coverage, because a lot of these are co-located?
So they're licensed in very similar bands, they also are licensed in different bands, that have different characteristics, but assuming that they're all co-located at the same location, I would, it's reasonable to assume they would have the same performance issues.
And does that mean that other providers, or maybe that's not part of this, because I think we've had other come before us, maybe the Sterling one, I don't remember, a number of years back. Does that mean other providers may be on these poles eventually, or not currently, or?
The pole will have the capacity to accommodate co-location in the future.
But that's not part of the application.
Should another carrier have a need? So that's, you know, when you put in a pole up, you just don't wanna, you just don't wanna build it just for yourself, although we are building it for the minimum height we need. It could be used by somebody else, assuming there was ground space, and assuming someone was interested in letting you do so.
And just for, I'm sorry, this is not, for our own experts, if that was to be the case, they would have to come to us to get a variance for that, or would they be as of right on that?
Only if they were going to modify one of the deviations or standards that they're seeking relief from today. So, they wouldn't be permitted to make the tower any higher for the purposes of co-locating.
And I'm not sure if this really is related to Mr. Rosenberg's line of questioning, but legally, each FCC licensed carrier is responsible for providing reliable service coverage. So even if another carrier, say AT&amp;T or TVM, had reliable in-building service in this area, it doesn't, it doesn't alleviate Verizon's responsibility to provide their own service. So, each carrier is responsible for delivering reliable service coverage.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. And you might be getting this, into this with the design, because, you know, he was asking about the 2A site, and there's a stealth site, which sounds kind of interesting, but we're not gonna have a stealth site, right? This is gonna be a normal site, visible?
It's not being proposed as a stealth site, no.
Okay. What's the difference between one or the other?
The difference is in the terms, well, the difference is in what Verizon proposing, again, I talked about a set of antennas. So in a stealth pole, or, you know, flagless pole, et cetera, to provide service in the frequency bands in which they're licensed for, they would take up multiple spots, because one antenna is not capable of providing all of those frequencies. So in this case, if it's 100 feet, they may have to take up two or three spots 10 feet apart, minimizing the opportunity for co-location.
So is it?
That would be the difference.
So you can't fit as many carriers' antennas on a stealth system?
Well, it would take up more space, it would, it would require a taller structure to accommodate the different carriers for their different bands, would ultimately wind up in a taller structure.
I didn't write down the height of that one, but this one is 104 feet, right? So, 95 for that one?
Ninety-five.
Okay, so the stealth one's actually shorter. And my question is, how did it come to 104, and what's the difference if it's 10% taller, 10% shorter, 15% taller, 15% shorter, 50% shorter? What's the drop-off? Why wouldn't it be as efficient as, you know, 104-foot one?
Sure, I can provide that, I have those details.
That's actually the next part of our testimony. We're gonna get into the propagation to be gained from the site at the height proposed, and why that height matters.
Mr. Lucatch, are you done?
I have questions.
Mr. Lucatch, I have one question, going back to my colleague's point before, where the white area, when, look at it from afar, the white area looks barren. When I look on this, this is the same, but it's in black and white, there seems to be, there are pixelated gray or maybe green spots on your, how is that determined, that those green areas are within spec? Is that, is that something we need to worry about at this point? You've got a large area that's not covered, but within it, you've got smaller areas that...
So, Mr. Chairman, you're referring to these specs or pixelated, you know, islands if you will?
Even the ones that are even less concentrated than that. There are dots all over it.
So, can you explain why this isn't just a, you know, a white, pure white gap, and why there are pixelations in building level of service?
Yes, well, the simulation, the computer simulation, obviously, is, does a very good job of predicting RF signals, but there are land use types that are incorporated in this, if I were to show this, so, there's USGS maps, there are land use types, there are structure types, certain heights, and RF is not, is not a precise level always, all the time, it fluctuates. So, the computer simulation program shows that, in terms of, this may be more dense vegetation, or tree area, where another area may not, and so that's reflected in the simulation as having a possibility of coverage. Generally, when you see a gap, and you see a transition from green to white, even though there may be some that show up, it generally shows that that's a hole, or it's, it's now the beginning of unreliable service, where it still may show up occasionally. It's, it's the nature of the program that predicts it, and there's other factors that go into it.
I understand, thank you. Uh, Gary, I'm sorry, Jerry?
Yeah, I'm Jerry. So, I just wanted to know, we talked a little bit about alternative sites earlier, and I just want to know if you looked at other sites within our industrial zones in that area, and if you could, if those zones could provide you with the coverage that you need? If you were to relocate this thing somewhere else, in the downtown Millington area, in one of the industrial sites, did you look at other sites? Like, I know you did from a business perspective, but from an engineering perspective, did you look at other sites, or was this the only one that you looked at?
This is one of three that were evaluated.
Okay. And was this chosen for, for business reasons, availability reasons, or is this optimization reasons?
Well, if I can go through the next, you know, slide, essentially where the search ring is generated, I wanted to point out, it's kind of centrally located.
You're gonna talk about in the next slide, you're gonna talk about the alternative sites and what else you...
That's important for the criteria of why a site is chosen, yeah.
Okay, you're talking, you're gonna...
Just, I'm sorry, just to give an outline of where Mr. Lucatch's testimony is going, we established, you know, establishing the gap, next will be the coverage to be gained from the pole, the height being proposed, then what, you know, what alternative sites were looked at, why they weren't pursued, and so we'll hit on that.
Fair enough, I'll hold then, thank you.
So, Mr. Lucatch, is there no other questions on the gap propagation? You have prepared another exhibit.
Yes, the next exhibit, that's also in the RF report, will be Exhibit B, titled Verizon Wireless Search Ring and Distance Map. So this map, again, is the same scale, same roads, that was in the previous exhibit, however, coverage has been removed, and the purpose of this site is to illustrate the distance, I think I read, the distances between a subject site and the existing Verizon sites. On average, I think it's 1.7, average distance to each one of the sites is about 1.7 miles. As you can see, in the center, again, is the subject site, the existing sites are, again, marked with yellow wedges around the, around the perimeter. And also, on the map, is a red, more or less a circle, and that essentially is what's generated by engineering. Once there is a gap that's established, it essentially says, these are the limitations of where a site should be placed to provide maximum coverage and adjust the service area. So those are the limitations. Going outside of this area would either provide coverage that's overlapping to existing sites, and so the site optimally must be placed. So, again, this defines the limitations on areas of where Verizon then goes and seeks for existing structures that have a suitable height, and see whether they're, you know, available in the area. In this case, there were not, as it's mostly residential, there's some mixed commercial, industrial use in there, but nothing, I don't think above 20, 30 feet in totality, fairly, again, dense population of trees, residents, so there wasn't an existing, existing structure that Verizon could co-locate on. So the second alternative is then to propose or look for something near the center of the property, and approach people, and see if they're interested in proposing a new facility. So it's kind of a last resort, in this case, that was the only option, because there are no existing facilities. Shorter heights, I mentioned, location is very important, but so is height, because height then limits further the RF signal, its ability to provide coverage. So something very, very low provide a diminutinous amount of coverage, whereas increase the height, you would be above the tree line and allow for additional coverage to be provided. The final exhibit is Exhibit C. It's titled Verizon Wireless Coverage From Existing On-Air Sites With Subject Site. Again, at 700 megahertz, this is the LTE frequency band that's being represented. So, this is a modification of the first map I showed with the existing sites and the coverage at 700 megahertz, with, overlaid on top of that, with the proposed site, the subject site, at 100 feet. And you could see a fair amount of the overall white, it doesn't capture everything in the gap area described, but it provides a very good amount of coverage from the 100-foot height. At 100 feet, the new site, we pull the statistics of what it, what it does, and again, being centrally located, it minimizes overlap, which is an important thing, and it maximizes Verizon's ability to adjust the larger service gap and amount of population there from one site. The, at 100 feet, the proposed site would cover over one square mile. Again, I had said the coverage gap was 1.5 square miles. It would essentially provide coverage to 0.4 miles along Northfield Road, south of Long Hill Road, that was one of the gap areas that I mentioned, 0.5 miles along Division Nav from Long Hill Road to Valley Road, 0.8 miles along Haas Road, west of the intersection of Division Street, Division Ave. Towards Stonehouse, Stonehouse Road, 0.55 miles along River Road, again, from Valley Road to Haas Road, 0.59 miles along Valley Road, west at the intersection of Division Street to, I guess that's, what is that, Stonehouse Road, again, or somewhere, Valley, Stonehouse. And 0.21 miles along Valley Road, east of Division Street as well. So, really, you kind of put these two pieces together, it's a distance of Valley Road that was previously not covered. Again, going and correcting it to the 2020 census data, that would effectuate 1,606 residents in the coverage gap area. By way of comparison, or, you know, statistics, just to provide an overall kind of recap, the in-building residential gap that I had first described was 1.5 square miles, and a 2010 population of 2190 people. At 95 feet, I'm sorry, not 100 feet, 95 feet, which would be the antenna center line, the proposed site would cover one mile, which would be 66.7% of the overall gap that was described. And 1,606 residents, the population 2020 census, which would be 73.3% of the overall population that identified in the service gap or affected area. The height was then also evaluated at lower heights, to answer your question about different heights. I don't, I don't know that it was evaluated higher, it was looked at lower. At 85 feet, again, using the same computer simulation, it's for the low band, 700 megahertz, 85 feet, the site would only cover 0.87 miles, provide coverage to 1,260 people, and that would represent 58% of the coverage gap in terms of area, and 57%, 57.5% in terms of the population. So, roughly an 8% reduction in terms of area, and an 18% reduction in terms of population. At 75 feet, the proposed site would provide coverage to 0.79 square miles, and 1,151 residents, and that would represent 52.7% of the overall area in terms of square miles and area, and 52% of the number of residents. And I have a number at 65 feet, obviously, there would be less than that. So, the difference between 95 feet and 85 feet is a significant one. So my professional opinion, the 100 feet and the 95 feet would be the, would be the minimum height necessary, and would maximize the amount of area that would be adjusted, and the amount of the population that would be adjusted as well.
Did you say 95 feet or 104 feet?
We're, that's what I was, let's clarify the heights, because you're gonna hear a series of different heights being quoted. So, Mr. Lucatch, 95 feet is the measurement that wireless carriers call the RAD center, right? That's the center of the antenna?
Yes, that's a source of confusion, that would be the center, so, the antenna goes up a few feet and down a few feet, and then the structure height with the lightning rod, et cetera, you might hear different references to heights, but this was, the analysis is done at the, essentially the center of the antenna height, at 95 feet.
And that's where the radio frequency coverage emits from, correct, in the center?
Yes, yes.
So, 95 feet is the measurement to the center of the antenna, is it correct, that 98 feet is the measurement to the top of the antenna?
I would have to look at the actual antenna models from the drawings to say if that was 98, 99. Generally, they're, you know, between three, I'm sorry, four and eight feet, something like that.
Our civil engineer can confirm when it comes up, that it is actually 98 feet to the top of the antenna, and then the top of the steel is 100, is 100 feet, basically the top of the tower. So our civil engineer can review that as well. And then the last measurement is 104, the tower's got a lightning rod on it, once again, the engineer will point that out on the center. So, Mr. Lucatch, you obviously concluded that what's being proposed is the minimum height necessary to address this gap in building service coverage, correct?
Yes, from my evaluation of statistics. Yes, from my evaluation of statistics, 95 feet would be the minimum height and maximize the coverage from the proposed location. It's at a logical location in the center of the existing Verizon network. It maximizes, again, the site's ability to provide coverage, minimizing the overall number of sites from wireless facility or the overall number of wireless facilities needed.
In your professional opinion, does the site substantially address the gap in coverage?
Yes.
Just with respect to operations, if this facility were approved, would it also provide E91 emergency services?
Oh, yes, it would.
And would this facility interfere with any other municipal communications or electronic equipment that might be in the area?
No.
Now, there were questions, can you go to the gentleman's question about alternative sites? We might have to save that for another witness. I'm not aware of any other light industrial district myself, other than the ...
Surrounding, surrounding, the surrounding area.
My understanding is, we can have our planner draft it.
Let's remove the word industrial, the surrounding area, the other zones in the area. What my question was, is, you know, does this have to be in this precise spot? You showed me the red area, right? So I kind of answered that question. So thank you for that slide. But the follow-up question to that was, did you consider and did you model any other particular spots within that red circle that you drew there? Was this the only model that you did? Because I thought you said earlier that you modeled three places. Did I not hear that correctly?
So the adjacent property, well, so it's a combination of things. Does it work from RF perspective? The adjacent property, I think that was mentioned as a mixed-use property, from RF perspective, that would work. So that was evaluated, same height, same elevation, same everything, generally in the same location.
Okay, so that's the question, I guess, how far away from the center of that circle can you go without clouding the results or changing the results? Because that answers my question. You don't need to model other areas within that Millington Center area then, because it's all the same, right?
Well, a structure place there would be same. So that's from RF perspective.
So 100-foot tower, 1,000 feet away, would give you the same results? Approximately, 500 feet, something like that, I mean, in that area?
It would, but it would also have to be a viable location. If it was any residential backyard, it wouldn't be, I'm sorry.
Just to satisfy your technical requirements, right, your optimization thing to get the most coverage you can on that 100-foot tower, if you move that tower a little bit here, a little bit there, you get the same result. Is that what, that's what I wanted?
In this area, yes, you would.
Okay. So one last question on this, and then I'll leave you alone. If you look at like around 11 o'clock on your red circle, towards the northwest side of your circle, you'll see like Rayburn Road. Over there, there's a, I think it's a sewer pump station owned by Basking Ridge or Bernard's Township. Is that a viable site? Can you share with municipal pump stations, sewer pump stations?
East Rayburn Road?
Yeah, East Rayburn Road is in Long Hill Township, but if you just go a little bit west of that.
Is it outside of the red circle or?
It should be just within the red circle.
Somewhere, like pointing in the right direction?
You know, it's not labeled on your map, but it's, I'm guesstimating that it's within your red circle. So I guess the first question is, can you share a property with a municipal sewage pump station?
That's really outside, Mr. Luke Katsch. From an RF perspective, it doesn't matter what underlying use it.
So he's only RF? He's not, okay, okay.
So, I mean.
But I'm seeing, and he's probably seen this movie before, he's done this like for 30 some years, so if we just maybe, he knew that, okay.
Generally speaking, you know, as long as you have a willing landlord, then potentially any property can be utilized. If it's going to be a township property, generally speaking, it has to be put out on a bid before you can even, you know, you can get this far.
Okay. This is in the same context of what other sites you considered before you picked this one. That's all I'm looking at.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Luke Katsch, we'd like to conclude that we've directed that 28. else that you wanted to touch on.
No, I believe I've covered everything I would like to summarize.
No further direct questions from Mr. Luke Katsch.
I've got a question. The other sites that are noted on there, you know, the Basking Ridge, Millington, Sterling Warren sites, was it considered at all as far as extending those poles to make up the gap?
So it's not, it's, I don't know if it was considered, but any potentially height change for that, the sites are too far away, so they will not effectively mitigate the current service gap.
They would generate enough signal to cover that gap.
There's not enough signal, so if it increases 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, just because of the distances that they're away, it's not possible, it's not a feasible answer or way to address the gap.
Could that, just piggybacking on that, could raising those towers, just hypothetically, if you could raise those towers, could it cause interference and obviously redundant coverage with other existing on-air sites?
Yeah, so, you know, I mentioned, you know, site placement, you want to reduce overlap as they share the same frequencies. So potentially raising each one slightly may increase the coverage. Again, it's limited by topography, height changes among other things. And then you, you know, in addition to maybe having some coverage, it's going to be not very good coverage, because you'll have competing signals, again, quasic interference.
Any other questions from the board?
How large an area is this map here in terms of square miles? Do you know? Guess, but.
I don't. If I use my fingers to kind of look at the scale that's embedded there, it's 0.5 square miles, I think, on the scale bar?
Yeah.
Right? So I'm in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, oops, the four fingers across, that's, that'd be 3 miles? 3 miles, and it's.
I think it's about a 9-square-mile section.
I would say that's, that would be accurate. Again, I described this, I think, as a 1 and 1/2 square mile gap.
Yeah.
Just essentially approximately by hand, 3 miles across, maybe 4 miles down.
So obviously, we can't see what's outside coverage, but let's assume, I mean, I would assume that because these are on the borders of this, that there's probably not other ones that are just outside. I mean, maybe you know, but that there's probably, because of coverage, you would want them at least a couple miles. So anything that's not in this picture may be relatively further out because of where the current ones are existing, which is appearing to be on the borders of the square, right? Is that a?
Yeah, so at evaluation, you look at the, what we call the first tier sites, which is, you know, the subject area and the surrounding sites. Obviously, Verizon's network is larger than this, but anything east of Sterling, right, would have no impact. It would cover another area, same to the north, south, et cetera.
My question then would be, for, in your experience, for a 9-square-mile plot of land, is this having seven towers of varying heights, but seven towers in a 9-square-mile area typical?
Yeah, well, this is, again, this is the low band, this is the best performing band or the one that provides the furthest coverage, is about a mile. If I were to show you the mid-band frequencies, most of this would be white. And that's where Verizon has higher capacity throughput, those types of things. So the clusters actually have to even get smaller for those. So again, I'm showing you the best case, but, you know, the intention is for all of those frequencies to kind of come together and kind of overlap each other, so there's a plethora of, you know, frequencies and services available throughout all those frequencies.
In terms of saturation, I guess, and just in terms of this high-band frequency saturation of just the poles themselves, you think seven in about a 9-square-mile plot of land is pretty typical for, like, New Jersey, I guess, because of the topography in New Jersey? Does that seem?
Well, yeah, New Jersey can vary wildly, right? This area is, I mean, it's dense, tree again, there's not a lot of terrain, I wouldn't say mountainous in certain other area regions, but I think it's pretty typical. You find each one of these sites, again, between 90 and 150 feet, depending on elevation, will cover about a 1-mile radius. And again, given the distance, about 1.7 miles, it's just, the area is too far from the existing sites for anyone to cover efficiently.
Any other questions on the board? From our experts?
Please pull the microphone, sorry. That's not a movable one. Closest movable one is right here, and it's short stick, so you got to like, that one has a longer, longer.
So regarding, we've talked about alternative sites, we're not really going to be able to talk about that right now, but is there, can you speak to any other technology or designs besides a monopole with antennas that could work to cover this area? Or is that non-viable? And if so, why is it non-viable?
So in terms of structure, again, I kind of pointed to whether it would be a stealth and the limitations about taking multiple locations from, you know, a structural standpoint and an RF perspective and limiting the amount of relocation positions. But to answer your question about alternative technologies or approaches as a way, as an alternate type, like a small cell, you know, people may be familiar with small cells, which would be a co-location, it would essentially look like a transformer up on top of a utility pole, and those are used in very, very specific densification types of network enhancement, where let's say capacity was just going to be added. Typically, they're just limited to the upper bands. I talked about the lower bands and the mid-bands. They're limited to mid-bands. The amount of space that would house radios at the bottom of the telephone pole would be limited. Each one would have to have backhaul network, power, et cetera. And typically, they're used in very, very small areas. There would not be a viable approach to cover such a large area, given that, at that height of 40 feet of telephone pole or something like that, and those frequencies may cover up to 800 feet. It would literally take dozens, if not hundreds, to cover the area in the same way.
At this point, we're ready to take questions from the public on this expert's testimony only. Questions, not comments. Comments will be later in the proceedings. Anybody who would like to speak, ask questions on the record, please come up, state your name, your address, and your question.
Certainly. It's Pamela Ogenz, O-G-E-N-S, Millington. So correct me if I'm wrong, there were four sites that were identified, the first being the enclave. Most people know it as the Tifa site in town, and the landlord was not interested. Second site, the Verizon building on Division Avenue, was eliminated because of lack of space. The third being the property at 84 Division Avenue, and three, it's surrounded by three residential zoned areas. The fourth is the fire department lot. What would have happened if, as with the enclave and the Tifa site, where the landlord said, "Not interested"? If the fire department had said, "Not interested," what would have happened then?
Ma'am, is that a question for the radio frequency engineer? This is a time to cross-examine the radio frequency.
With the sites and why this site was determined, so it seemed like an appropriate time, since that was the discussion of sites. If you'd like me to wait, I will do that.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood that this is time to cross-examine the radio frequency engineer. So if he has an answer, he's welcome.
If you'd like me to come back, I'll do that.
You're welcome to come back.
Okay. If you'd like me to ask my question at a more appropriate time, I'll do that.
Is there an answer from this witness?
I mean, it's really outside the scope of Mr. Luke Katsch's testimony, but I mean, if the board will allow, just anecdotally, what would happen if the fire department is not interested, then we have to find another location.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, closing to the public. Oh, wait, we have one.
While he's making his way up, what was the next best location if the fire department said no?
I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. So the question was, you know, if the fire department said no, what would happen? So I guess I'm wondering what was the next best option for radio frequency?
I mean, there was only one other willing landlord in the surge area, that was the 84 Division Street location. That was 84 Division Street.
Dale Brendan.
Yeah. So that was the only other interested landlord. So potentially, you would have to maybe go back to that location and see if something can work. But just, once again, procedurally, you really don't, you don't produce these maps and whatever for like specific sites until you know that you can actually, there's a landlord that's interested, because you need to have a location to go to. We could do maps for every property, any property you're asking about, but if there's not a willing landlord, then it's really just an exercise in futility.
I'm sure you wouldn't approach a landlord unless you knew you could have positive results.
There's lots of landlords that say no.
No, I mean with the radio frequency increase.
Oh, well, yes, well, that was Mr. Luke Katsch's exhibit with the search ring. Gives, our radio frequency gives an idea of where you have to look for a site that would work. Then site acquisition goes out and tries to locate a site within that area, and there's a whole criteria that we can analyze, but Mr. Luke Katsch touched on it. He tried to find, his testimony was, you look for existing structures first, if you can. Can't find an existing structure, then the next thing is to, is a law man. And obviously, you look for non-residential areas. We look at the code to see if there's direction in the wireless organs, that's where we're supposed to go. Long Hill Township does not have a wireless organs. So because of that reason, we're left to find a reasonable location or case law.
That's okay. Steve Daly, Millington. D-A-L-Y. Like the news without the I. The analysis is based on Verizon coverage or everybody's coverage? So if you have AT&amp;T and you have regular coverage, then that's okay?
So, Mr. Luke Katsch, we're only here presenting Verizon's coverage gap.
Yes. Only Verizon was considered in this analysis.
Any other questions? Seeing none, closing it up.
Christina Berquist, B-E-R-Q-U-I-S-T. I have a question about the significant gap in coverage, although that was sort of touched on just now before. What do you consider a significant gap? By what standard is it significant?
That's a very good question, and I think that's a more of a legal term from RF perspective. It's, is it not just a dead spot? Is it larger than that? This area is 1.5 square miles, there were over 2,000 residents that were affected. I would term that significant.
So affected as in they don't get any service or just spotty service?
So the area presented that is being impacted is not, no service, it's just not, does not meet the engineering criteria for reliable in-building residential service.
Can you elaborate on that, because I know there are so many, you know, 5G OT, like there are so many ranges you're talking about, low frequency, high frequencies, what does that mean to the end consumer?
Well, each frequency band has its different set of parameters. Again, I focused on the low band as that being the most optimistic and the best picture of Verizon's network and showing that there's a significant gap in service, 1.5 square miles, over 2,000 residents, and an engineering level that's defined mathematically. And an engineering level that's defined mathematically as it's ninety-five dBm says that you will have coverage at this location at X percent of the time, ninety percent of the time. That's what the reliability of location and time. Those are the design standards that are consistent with industry standards. So it's not an indication particularly of, will you, again, will you be able to make a call, establish a session? But typically, when there's unreliable service in building, rates, data rates are slowed down to what Verizon expects to provide in terms of throughput for the tower down to your mobile device and a mobile up, call quality interruptions, those types of things. So there's an unhappy or unsatisfied type of customer usage associated with unreliable service.
Okay. And could you also speak to, you talked about the competing signals?
Please share the microphone.
You said that competing signals are a problem if you had overlapping coverage, right? Can you tell us what kind of problems you would expect with that?
Similar to a lack of coverage. So no service or lack of reliable in-building coverage. If you had enough signals overlapping, again, you may see five bars, but the inability to communicate or have speeds and it would be service impacting as well. So it tends to have the same type of effect when you have overlapping signals to a large extent.
Is it interference issue? Just clarify that.
Yes, it's interference because the Verizon, as well as other carriers, reuse the same frequencies. So you wanna minimize the amount of overlap, but you wanna provide a tiny bit of overlap so a user can traverse through areas uninterrupted with service.
But I imagine I would be able to find overlapping or competing signals in like very urbanized areas, right? Where there is a lot of coverage from different providers, or no?
You would see maybe the presence of more locations in a dense area. But you would also have stronger signals provided from the locations. In other words, if you had a number of buildings and they were located in close proximity, if you're closer to one, it would overcome the signal from the other, just given due to the distance. In this case, the sites are very, very far away, so they're all competing relatively with the same signal level. Which creates interference, in addition to not having reliable service, which is the focus here.
How many complaints roughly have you gotten from unhappy customers in this area? Or, I mean, I'm just trying to like, obviously, this came from somewhere because you're saying that, you know, you have unhappy customers that prompted this.
Well, I don't believe the testimony was that unhappy customers was what prompted this. But could you answer the question, does Verizon use drop-hole data as a measuring stick for gas?
Verizon monitors their network for statistics, for users, you know, key metrics, key performance metrics. I didn't analyze those simply because the analysis shows that there's a service gap. What I stated was not the report of unhappy customers, but that the user experience would not be a very, very good one, given the performance is expected to be very poor, given that there's not reliable coverage.
I have one last question. You said that there would be benefits to the volunteer fire department of getting that, you know, new antenna there installed. What kind of benefits are they expecting to get?
From an ORF's perspective.
Are there others?
Well, I mean, the benefits, it goes back to my opening statement.
So it goes back to my opening statement, subject qualification by our civil engineer. The fire department has a singular, single whip antenna on their property that could be relocated or upgraded onto this tower at a later time, if it was constructed, to provide better communication services for the fire department. Verizon was also told that the police department uses Verizon service in their cruisers. So by introducing reliable coverage into this area, they would get the benefit of that reliable service. So that's what was meant.
The police doesn't use different gradients?
That's not the testimony of this gentleman.
So I guess, so the police communicates, the communication with the police department depends on wireless signal, is what you're saying?
That's what was communicated to be Verizon by the Long Hill Township Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
Ron Sacks, eighteen ninety-one, Long Hill Road in Millington.
Is it S-A-X?
S-A-C-H-S.
Can you...
That red dot is...
Please speak in, please speak in the mic, thanks.
That red dot is the firehouse?
Yeah.
Okay. How far in that circle, as you go in any direction, it still has the same like effect of putting that tower there?
So the search area that was established is about point six miles by point seven miles, is kind of an oblong, kinda close to a circle, but not. Obviously, the center was really the target. You could, again, you could go outside of this area a bit, but the further you get to the red boundary, then you have to evaluate that to see, is there, you know, coverage overlap on existing coverage? You wanna minimize that.
I get the same question that I'm asking, I'm not getting a straight answer. How far can you go for that, that substance of, and still have like the same effect of putting a tower? Two miles, three miles?
No, well, I mean, the whole radius of this is from the subject site, north to south, is about point six miles this way up and down, and about point seven miles that way. That would be the limitation of how...
Can you go any farther?
No, because then you would provide a site which would be, I wish this was on the same map, but essentially, you would wind up in an area where there's already signal level. And so placing a site there would be mostly overlap, and it still wouldn't adjust the area that's been identified.
Is there any town, like, focus town, like a lane from residential houses or...
I'm sorry, you said any town, land?
Town, land.
Thank you.
Town, land, sorry.
Not that I'm aware of. That was presented for evaluation.
Who would have presented that? I feel like someone could have put that tower other than the firehouse.
Site acquisition, you're the ones who go out and look for a site.
Did you look at all the town over there?
Well, I can let them testify today.
Yeah, I wanna, I apologize for interrupting, but just it's for the sake of our procedure, these questions really need to be on...
You talked about distances, so that's why I wanted to ask.
Totally understand, yeah.
Any questions with this expert? Seeing none, closing to the public.
There's somebody.
Oh, come on up. I pulled back.
Reopen the meeting.
Reopen.
On the crescent, on the crescent, right across from the... So a couple of questions. My understanding is that this is supposed to be a five, a five G tower?
Yes, that is one of the technologies and frequency bands being deployed.
You're talking about a low-frequency band, seven hundred megahertz. Five G, what they call the, I think the FR2 band, is twenty-four gigahertz, up to about fifty-two gigahertz, much higher, well into the microwave range.
No, that's not being deployed. The C-band is being... I understand, but that frequency band is not being deployed as part of the five G deployment.
What is? I mean, I understand that you can use, there's different bands that can be used. Are you just gonna use like seven hundred?
Eight hundred fifty megahertz and thirty-seven hundred megahertz.
That's as high as you're going?
That's it.
Okay, that's what your plans are now. Do you have plans to go higher?
I don't know if Verizon holds licenses above those or plans to deploy those frequency bands at this location or any others.
Technology is going that way, I would expect Verizon follows too. It's maybe not now. So then I have another question here, a couple of actually. So I'm looking at the, at your exhibit A, and I'm looking at the coverage area. And I, you know, I see this like kind of white area where your coverage is less than ideal. And I see this antenna. Now, if I were to do it, I'd put it pretty much in the middle. It's not in the middle, it's not anywhere near the middle. And then after you go and establish coverage with the new location, there's still this hourglass shape that's west of King's Road, north of seventy-eight. It's nearest to the Vernor's Township antenna system, and no coverage is available for that.
Could you use the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If the gentleman doesn't mind, we break up the questions and take the first one first. I give the mic.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, let's share that.
Yeah, share the mic as well, please.
Well, okay, so move on to another question.
Well, yeah, the court was...
You have to unplug the other one.
All right. Is this better? Yeah, okay. So, you know, what I'm wondering about is the coverage area. You're basically doing something to remediate the coverage area that's white, and it shows white here on this, on exhibit C. Now, I noticed that the Vernor's Township antennas are pointed in such a way, if this can be relied upon, to basically miss that area. So is that like, is that like woods? Or, you know, what is that? You don't seem to be aiming an antenna array at it, right here.
Yeah, so just for the record, the gentleman is pointing to the lower left-hand corner, above seventy-eight, if you'll notice in that area. I'm sorry, this is exhibit C, which is existing and, existing and coverage with the subject site. The area that's shown blank without coverage, there are no roads that run through there, so presumably, it's very less population. It's not an area that would be prioritized to provide service.
Just for the sake, for the sake of the record, I just wanted to note, I'm gonna refer to each exhibits within the exhibit as exhibit A1A, A1B, and A1C respectively.
Okay, another question, just these are things you brought up. You talked about the process of identifying sites as, well, this particular site didn't have a location, didn't have a location high enough, and most of them did, and so we suddenly end up on the firehouse site, and we're building a tower. Now, I know you call it a unipole. It's a unipole that's gonna, you know, spread out. It's not gonna be very pretty, but that's off-topic here, I'm sure, probably. But there's another site that's not far, so you're not in the middle of your lack of coverage area here anyway. There's a site just on, basically across the railroad tracks where the cars park. I believe that's not, I believe that's Long Hill Township owned property. But I mean, something like that would move this a few hundred yards away from residential. I mean, you know, so maybe the firehouse is not zone residential, but right next door, two feet away, when you cross the property line, residential, all around, residential.
Sir, is there a question for the engineer?
We shouldn't be building there.
That's a comment, that's a comment for the public portion of the meeting.
Basically, what I'm asking about is, you know, the process in researching this. It seems like it could have been a little bit more cognizant of the area. Okay.
Sir, do you have any further questions for the engineer?
No, that's all I have to say for now.
Any other questions? Very once, right? For real this time. Close to the public. Yes. The hour being quarter past nine, can we take a ten-minute break, come back a little bit past eight twenty-five, and see if we can fix that? And we'll be right back. And we'll be right back.
We're back on the air. Ed, if I could, please just make an announcement. Um, everybody who's using or speaking mi- the microphones, um, there are a lot of people at home watching, and we're having, you know, less than stellar time with these microphones, so please just make sure you hear yourself speaking into the microphones. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, back on the record, uh, we'd like to proceed with our presentation. I'll call our next witness, Mr. Daniel Penesso, who is our radio frequency emissions expert.
First name De- oh, wow. Uh, first name Daniel, last name Penesso, P.E.N.E.S.S.O. I have a, uh, shall I qualify my?
Uh, I'll, I'll swear in first.
Oh, oh, okay.
Because we need that to be the truth as well.
Okay.
Um, do you, do you solemnly swear that the testimony, you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Did it come in? Yes, I do.
Where'd the cordless mic go?
Uh...
Oh, here it is.
Oh, okay.
Let's see, oh yeah, this is better.
This is like the...
Alright, and if you would, please give the board the benefit of your background credentials, emphasizing your experience.
Yes, so, I have a Bachelor of Science in Electronic Engineering Technology, um, from DeVry Technical Institute out of Chicago, Illinois. I have been employed as a radio frequency engineer for over twenty-five years. I have testified with regards to, um, FCC compliance at hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, as well as in New York, and have been accepted as an expert witness in the past.
And is your license in good standing?
Uh, the, I don't have a license.
Okay.
There is no license for this, no.
Uh, is it a certification or?
No, just, just my, and, just my education and, and work experience.
Okay.
Yes.
I would recommend that he be recognized as an expert in, uh, radio frequency emissions.
We deem you an expert, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, switch.
This one works, but...
I gotta just talk softer, maybe.
So, Mr. Penesso, um, did you perform an analysis of the proposed Verizon wireless facility with respect to the radio frequency emissions?
Yes.
And, uh, was the analysis and conclusions contained in this report dated July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, entitled Proof of RF Compliance for Verizon Wireless Facility, Millington Two?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna mark this as A2.
On this one?
Thank you. And this, uh, this is also in the board's packet.
A2, A, A2, oh, I lost my mic.
You need a description?
Yeah.
Uh, A2 is a report dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, entitled Proof of RF Compliance for Verizon Wireless Facility, Millington Two. You're welcome. So, um, Mr. Penesso, the, uh, the analysis and conclusions contained in this report were performed by you or under your supervision, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Alright, could you please, uh, review the analysis and conclusions in this report?
Okay, yes. So, the report that we marked as exhibit A2 states that the, uh, com- the full com- the, let me rephrase it. The site with all of its frequency bands operating at full power would be at a fi- less than five percent of the FCC standard. The FCC has set forth guidelines, and the guidelines are provided with the FCC Office of Engineering and Technology Bulletin sixty-five, and all carriers, not only Verizon, but any carrier that's operating with, uh, radio frequency energy, has to comply with the guidelines. The guidelines set forth are, will allow a carrier to go up to a hundred percent and still be in compliance, because there's a buffer set forth within these compliance guidelines. And being that we're only at four point five, under five percent, we're well below the FCC guidelines for compliance with the site, um, at the proposed centerline height of ninety-five feet.
Excuse me, can you explain to us what those standards mean? Like, what does that mean?
So...
That five per- the, you're, you're at five percent of the standards. What are their standards? How much power you can push into the population?
So, it's, no, it's, it's based on the power. Let me take these. So each of the carriers, seven hundred, as Ron stated, seven hundred, eight fifty, they have a certain amount of power that is being, uh, used to have that signal propagate outward. And so right now, being that we're at a certain centerline height of, we're at a hun- we're at ninety-five feet centerline height with the antennas, with Verizon's, uh, equipment operating at full power all the time, which normally doesn't happen, but we're analyzing it at the most conservative analysis possible, it's only at four point five percent. So if another carrier were to go on to the...
What's the measurement? Is it megahertz?
No, it's, it's in, it, no, no, it's, it's, it, first it's in DBM and it's converted into watts.
Watts.
So watts, and then we convert that into a percentage. So that you can compare it. So the percentage is up to a hundred percent, we're only at four point five.
Can that be changed in the future?
Meaning changed.
Meaning can you change the equipment on the tower, and will those numbers change?
If it, if you were to change the, um, amount of power, or another carrier were to co-locate on the tower, then a new analysis would need to be done.
Okay.
But on so, I've done, analyzed so many sites on a, on a, on a monopole or...
How about when it's fully utilized, though? You have, everybody's up there.
Uh, yeah, you would still be in compli- I haven't seen anything at, because you're so far...
You can't go in compliance with FCC, right? You can't do that, right?
You, you would, you, you, we can't go, we cannot be out of compliance, but I have not seen a site that's, because it's so far away from the general population. You know, from the, the antennas are so far from the ground, or from, so far from any person, that we would not, we would, we would be in compliance. I haven't seen a site, a monopole site, that we were not in compliance.
Can you compare the, the, the RF that somebody's going to absorb from that, from that device to some other things that we're more familiar with in our house, or other places we might go?
Well, in your home, you have your, uh, everything puts out EMF, even humans do. So like, you have, for example, you have in your house a tel- now the TVs don't have tubes, but they used to, but you have a Wi- and everybody has Wi-Fi routers.
Refrigerator.
That refrigerator, those types of things.
What we're getting up there?
Like two percent, or so, a small amount, but everything, everything has EMF that it, or, you know,
EMP?
That are, it's radio frequency energy that's being, that's being emitted. But they're at low levels, and these types of energy are non-ionizing. It's not gonna, um, it doesn't have enough energy for you to have, uh, um, remove an electron from an atom, because people are concerned that it could have a health effect, but this is not the case, because it's so low. The phones operate on merely watts of power, very low power.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, I have no further questions of Mr. Penesso, um, but just to sum up, Mr. Penesso, in your professional opinion, the site, if approved, uh, will operate well within FCC, allow the standards for RF emissions?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. How, how is the site powered? You said, as we power it, was...
There will be power run to the, there's base station equipment that we spoke about, um, that'll be, uh, enclosed in the garage. There's some type of a shed or a, a barn. That will, that will power, then you'll have remote radio heads that will be located behind the antennas. That's what will generate the signal. So you'll have fiber optic ca- so power is, power is coming.
I'm not talking about the signals, and I'm not talking about the, the power of the stuff coming out, and I know that's what you're testifying. I guess this might go back to, it's not RF, I don't, maybe it's civil, but what is the...
Yeah, that's civil.
What is the energy source for powering up your antenna? Is it the diesel, is, is it the diesel engine, or is it electric?
No, electric, electric.
Okay.
They'll be run, they'll run electric right in from PSENG.
There's an, there's an electrical service that our engineer, our civil engineer can review on the site.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question about this? This is, you put this together, this July twenty-fourth, um, study. I know in the back, there's some appendices. Um, they're labeled as Verizon. I don't know if this is just something typical that Verizon issues as well. It's regarding safety and awareness, training, et cetera. It's not the easiest thing to read, because it looks like it's been copied from a couple of things, but there is a, on the right column of the last page, it talks about antenna safety and antenna types, and, yeah, and I, I don't want to be alarmist here or anything. I know there's probably some similar questions from other people, but there are some cautions and concerns that it says about each type. I can't even read what the first type of, uh, antenna is. Yoki? I don't know what that says. Uh, panel, whip, microwave, and each one, it says, maintain distance, et cetera. There seem to be some safety precautions about these?
Can I confirm what you're looking at? Oh, so the very last page.
Very last page, right column.
So on, on the very last page, this is, you'll see, the, what you're looking at is like, you'll see a notice RF, which is the yellow. These are different signages, but this is a general statement. If you look on the bottom, there's a photo of antennas on a rooftop. So, uh, and you can see, um, there's a parapet, and then you'll see the caution sign with a yellow triangle. Because an antenna that is accessible, if you're on a rooftop, which this isn't for the, this isn't the case with this particular site. If, antennas are mounted on a rooftop, if it is accessible by the general public, the carrier has to mitigate that sight, because we can't have anybody walking, because you have to imagine, the antennas are, it's wattages of power like a light bulb, a very high wattage light bulb. If someone were to walk in front of it, that heat, you know, is what we have to prevent someone from doing. So, on rooftop sites, they're either mitigated with signage or barriers. So that's what this, um, last page is, uh, stating, because that is, something is part of mitigation. But for this case, there is no mitigation. There would be signage and, um, informational signs on the compound itself that would, um, alert, and, and people can't, you know, you can't climb this monopole. There would be pegs, uh, up above, if everyb- if someone had to climb it, but for the general public, they could not access the monopole to get up to the antenna.
So the only place, uh, in terms of danger would be if you were actually at the top at a hundred feet?
At the source, yes, at the source, yes.
Okay, and that wouldn't radiate any further than where the hundred feet, it wouldn't be down to the ground?
Right, that's why we're, that's why I stayed. At the ground level, it's only four point five percent. If you're up at the source, it's gonna be, of course, if you're right at the source, you would exceed the FCC limit.
I gotcha, okay, so the four point five is from ground level.
Because it's like a flashlight, if you're shining a flashlight, the, 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 the intensity of the light is right at the source, and then as it propagates outward, it dissipates. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Experts? No questions. Any, come on up.
Yep.
My name is Jennifer Miguel, M.I.G.U.E.L. So you said that the... So, you said that the distance, the closer you are, the more intense it is and the more dangerous it is. So, at what safety level are we safe at? What's the difference? What's that safety level?
So, you would have to be a bird or something 95 feet in the air, and about 50 feet away from the antennas.
Okay.
So, that, that is why, it's impossible for a human to do that.
Great.
Yeah.
So, my house is 20 feet from this antenna, and we have multiple stories that do reach pretty close to the top of this antenna. So, we are under 50 feet away from this antenna, so are we safe?
Yes, yes.
How are we safe under the 50 feet that you just said we are?
Yeah, you're safe, because you're below the, the antenna propagates outward. Your house, your house is not right in line with the antennas.
No, but it's closer to the top than the ground.
No.
On my, on my top floor...
Right.
On my top floor is closer to the top of the antenna than the ground floor of the antenna. We are closer, we are 20 feet away from that antenna, and we are, we have three stories in our house, up to the top of our house. So, we are not super close to the ground, we don't have one story.
You're heading into the territory of what would be considered testimony and not asking a question.
Okay, but he mentioned safety distances, so I'm speaking to the distance of my house to the antenna within the limits that he spoke, which was safe to be in. And our house currently, at all levels, is not at, within those limits. I'm only speaking about the, our house. I'm only speaking about our house and the limits within that we are living in, that he has already testified, is not safe to be in those ranges, and we are currently living in those ranges of the proposed.
You're making a factual assertion, that's considered testimony? So, I would encourage you to save any testimony for the public comment portion.
If she spoke in hypotheticals and said, if a house was X feet tall, would that, could she ask that?
Rephrase it as a question.
She could. Yes, I guess, ask in the kind of a...
Thank you, so...
If you know how tall your house is.
Okay.
See, that's, that's the issue we're having, is that the testimony, there's been testimony now that the house is within 20 feet. The tower itself is...
Your house is with...
Here, here, take the microphone.
Just one person at a time.
Yeah, one person.
So, the tower is approximately 73 feet from the closest property line.
That's not...
So, there is no possible way that the house could be, unless the house is on the fire department property.
Our house is 20 feet off of, actually, probably 17, because that was the legal limit when we built the house.
Oh, yeah, oh, she's, so, she's, she's saying her, what I believe she's saying is that her house is within 20 feet of her own property line.
No, it is 20 feet within the property line of the firehouse. Where this, not the firehouse, the building, the firehouse property line, which is where the antenna is going.
The antenna.
It's on your map that it shows 20 feet that our, our corner of our property is on, our home is on.
Well, we can address the distance when our engineer comes up.
So, fine, the hypothetical is if there was, which we live in.
So, re-ask the question then.
Hypothetically, if there was a home three stories high, within 20 feet of that tower, are we safe? Guaranteed, we are safe, no problems, no safety. We don't have to worry about walking, or my kid's ball throwing, going over, within 20 feet of the property line where the tower is that we're playing under all day long, hypothetically.
So, you're saying that your house, if this, this is the monopole, and this is 20 feet away, your house is adjacent to the monopole, which it doesn't, it cannot be.
But do the hypotheticals you want.
Hypothetical. So, I'm saying, if you're, if you're at the same height of the antennas, you have, you have to be further away than 20 feet, is what I'm saying. That's, yeah.
I have to check the one...
Yeah, that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't make...
I agree, if you do have a common or would like to...
I've made, I've made...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like a yes. That's her husband.
Christina Burquist again. Now, so you mentioned the 5% within the FCC standards, right? What are the FCC limits in numbers?
So, you can go up to 100% and still be within the FCC guidelines.
Right, that's the 100%, but can you give that to us in wattage numbers? Because you said that's how it's calculated, right?
Right, but it's represented in a percentage.
Right, but you can still give me the reference for nano watts, right, per square meter or per centimeter?
Okay, let me look for you. So, you, I can go through each one for the ERP if you would like to have that. So, for the 700 megahertz, we have 1,253 ERP watts. For 850...
Hold on, so 750 is what you're putting up there, right?
These are all the frequency bands that will be deployed, correct? Yeah? So, each of these bands that are being deployed have been analyzed at the maximum wattage of power that they can transmit at. And being, and I can go through and give you all the wattages, but it's converted to a percentage so that you can compare it to the FCC limits.
Well, I understand that, but I still...
Here, here, use the mic so she can get...
Sorry, I understand the percentage thing, I'm just curious as to the numbers, because when I looked, I was trying to find that information, and I found something that was expressed in micro watt per square meter or per centimeter, is that correct or incorrect?
It's the density, yes.
Okay, and what I looked at was a number, something like 580 micro watts per square centimeter? This is at roughly around, correct or no?
But this, I'm giving you the convert, here, let me talk to the microphone.
I'm talking this is...
So, tell me the question, though, that you're asking, what do you want to know?
The maximum allowed EMF frequency, right, is 580 micro watt per square centimeter by the FCC, right?
Okay.
Okay, how does that compare to what an average cellphone would give out?
So, you're asking, the maximum is, you're stating from, you have your own notes there, of what the maximum power density is. So, looking at this, that's the maximum, this is well below the maximum, well below.
Right, but five, so 5% of 500, like 5.8 million per square meter, what would be 5%? Like, 1. something?
Or even less.
Okay, but we're still talking one...
You're well below that, that threshold that you're, in the micro watts per centimeter squared. We're well below that. This is basically, 4% is like, almost nothing. Like I said, it's comparable to like a Wi-Fi transmitter in your home, a router, at 2%. There's different things that, in your home, that are emitting almost as much as this cell site would emit. You see, very, very, this is very low. A monopole cell site such as this is very low emissions. It's, it's, it's nothing, there is, you're not even, there's no emissions at all, almost, you're almost at the, you're almost, you're below 5% of the threshold.
Right, I mean, of the threshold, I get that, but...
So, that's, that's it, there's nothing else to say.
Well, not really. I mean, I do have some questions there, because there is significant amount of data now that talks about cellphone radiation, which is probably significantly less than what a tower would put out, right? Like, an individual cellphone probably puts out a lot less of this, right, than a tower, no?
An individual cellphone depends how far away are from, you from the, it's a two-way communication system. If your cellphone has to power up to transmit back to the serving cell, it can emit more power. Depends on where the, how far away are from the serving cell you are, that varies. But the phone can put out, it puts out EMF as a cell site, but not the same, it's a cellphone. And these are still, cellphones are even operating at the, within the FCC guidelines, there is no issue with a cellphone.
But do they put out less than the cellphone tower?
It depends on where the cellphone is transmitting to. If it has to power up, it could be more, it depends. And it's only depending on how the phone is, as I said, if the phone has to power up to transmit back to the serving cell. But it's still, a cellphone is well within the FCC guidelines, whether it's powered up or down. And, and why, but...
Doesn't mean there aren't documented health, negative health effects.
There are no negative health effects, but I can't...
First of all, I have to check.
Okay, you're right, I know this...
If I could just know my objection real quick, I'm sorry. I'm sure the board is well aware that, you know, the case law and the regs on this are pretty clear. No local jurisdiction can make a determination on a cell site based on perceived health, you know, effects from radio frequency emissions. You know, once, once the applicant has demonstrated that, the site will comply with FCC emission standards based upon the mathematical formulas that are contained in Mr. Penasso's report. So, we believe we complied with that, so we can't answer any questions with regard to any studies or reports that might be out there about, you know, potential health effects from cellphones, cell towers, or things of that nature.
Sir, can I ask a question?
I just want to note for the record, Mr. Ferraro's characterization of the law is correct, that is a federal statute.
Thank you. Just to help our residents understand what's going on, can your expert talk about the amount of RF you receive from being in the radius of that cell tower, maybe 100 feet radius of that, compared to your own personal cellphone when you're holding it at your ear? Like, what's, what's the RF? I think I know what it is, but I'd like to hear you say what it is.
Do you have that analogy?
I don't know, the cell, each cellphone is different, though, how can you know what?
Average cellphone versus average cell tower. So, cell towers, my understanding is that they project the signal outward, not downward, right? So, it's not, there's not going to be a lot of RF at the base of that tower, it's going to be towards...
No, it's, at the base of, the 4.5% is at a, at a distance away from the tower. Anywhere else, it's less than that.
Can we not use the percentage term anymore? Can we just say that this is a cell tower, and this is what, whatever measurements you want to use, instead of the percentage, the RF, right? Whatever you're, whatever you're talking about, gives it this much. And your own handheld cellphone, when you're holding it to your head, gives you this much? Like, can you, you have to know about what that is, I think I do.
Yeah, to each cellphone, it could be up to 2% on a, like I said, it depends on if it's got to power up. So, you, you cannot, as I stated...
Okay, so typically, would a cell tower have a lot more?
Okay, sorry.
A lot more, or a little bit more power, RF power to your head, to your brain, right? Than your cellphone, holding it right next to your head?
Right, the cellphone is definitely more RF power than the cell site, because...
Very intensely, like 1,000 or 10,000 times more, right?
Yeah, because you're not going to be able to be, the cell site, as I, as was stated, once the signal leaves the site, it dissipates very rapidly.
Correct.
So, there is no...
Going towards the horizon, right?
Going towards the horizon, and also, inside a home, or even outside, there is, it's not directed right on you like the phone is. But even now, people don't, they're using, some people do still hold it to their head, but they use a wireless, a wireless headset, or they use a speakerphone.
It's safe to say that you get more, if it is harmful, more harmful RF from a cellphone?
But it's not harmful.
More RF from a cellphone, take away harmful, from a cellphone than you do from a cell tower?
Yes, if you were holding the cellphone to your head, yes.
Thank you.
I think that gets to the point, thank you, Jerry. Any other questions? Please.
Stand over here. Hi, my name's John Caputo, Millington, C-I-P-U-T-O. So, the question for you is, I, we've all been assuming that Millington and the Village is kind of a flat site, but if you were standing on the, the firehouse property, we, it's pretty clear that there's a good 20, 30-foot slope up to Long Hill Road, and then from there, there's probably another, and I'm not testifying, but anyone who could walk by and see there's another 10 to 15 feet up to Sunny Slope. So, 100-foot tower at the base of the firehouse property, 95 feet to the centerline. You can't really assume that there are no effects to the, to the residents up on Sunny Slope, because I feel like some of those first floor, second floor of those houses on the hill are already up to 100 feet, measured from the base of the tower. And they might only be 300 to 400 feet away. So, I understand, I don't know as much about propagation, critical distance, as you do. At what distance does, does it become a safety hazard if you're directly in line with these box antennas?
So, your question is similar to, I forgot her name, the woman that just spoke? And so, there is no, the site, as I stated, you have to, you cannot be right in line with the antennas to have an issue, like, as if I, when I was speaking about the signage regarding it being right in front of the antennas. There is no home within the vicinity of this site that would cause an issue, or a structure that would cause an issue at the same height of the antennas. Anything that's in the same height of the antennas is far enough away to not have an issue. That's my, that's my statement and the testimony that I'm giving. We have no issue with any structure or any, any type of property or home or rooftop that's in, in line with the propagation of the antenna that would cause an issue with the emissions. There is none. It's already been analyzed, there's no, there's no structure or rooftop or, or anything, unless you were a bird right in front of the antenna.
Does, can I ask?
Yeah.
So, does, I haven't seen the evidence, it wasn't posted. Does the, does the study take into account topography?
It does take into account topography.
And what was the, what was the highest obstacle that you found within?
I, this is not the same, he's trying to...
I think it's very relevant, because, what's the critical distance at?
Sir, if I could just...
At, at the elevation of the antenna?
We're kind of going around and around some...
I heard 50 feet, I heard 55 feet.
The...
What is the critical distance?
A civil engineer can testify as to what the ground elevation is, he would be our next witness. So, I can address that through the next witness.
But, did you, you testified that outside of 50 feet from direct contact, you'd be okay? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what you said.
I'm asking, that is, was it 50 feet away? If you were a bird and you were 50 feet away, you would be okay?
That's right.
Okay.
So...
Closer than 50 feet for a bird, it might be problematic.
Yes.
So, so, I mean, just by that testimony, anything that's up on the hill is obviously going to be a lot further away from that.
Yeah, his testimony, but you said your, your other person will testify to that, this, but he is testifying that 50 feet...
The distance, exactly.
A bird within 50 feet would be in trouble, anywhere outside of 50 feet would be okay.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
But we're not birds either.
Any additional questions?
Why don't we do this? We'll come back next time, and we'll specify exactly, there's a, there's a calculation in this report as to what the maximum exposure level is, and why don't we just come back and put it on the record, at what distance?
But he's asking, they're asking at the height, though.
That's what I recommend.
Can you make a few different points on that? Like, what the exposure level is at this distance, that, like, 100 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, or something like that?
Sure, yeah.
Just so we can get an idea of how much signal is lost as, as distance goes on, I imagine it goes down, right?
It will, closer and further away, it would be less.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, closing questions to the audience.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to our next witness, who's our civil engineer to review the site plan, Mr. Peter Ludas.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, could you please state your name and spell your last for the record?
Yes, my name is Peter Ludas, L-U-D-A-S. I work for Network Building and Consulting at 1777 Century Parkway West in Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Duke University. Been practicing engineering for about 20 years, about 10 years in this industry of telecommunications. I've testified before boards in New Jersey dozens of times in the past, and I'm here to speak about this project.
And is your license in good standing?
It is.
All right, thank you, I recommend that he be recognized as an expert in the field of...
All right, thank you. I recommend that he be recognized as an expert in the field of engineering.
We deem you an expert. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, Mr. Ludas, the, the site plans you're about to present have a last revision date when you get set up. So if you can just identify the last revision date on the site plans you're about to testify to?
Yes, the zoning drawings are dated March 7, 2025, revision two.
Consisting of approximately eight sheets?
Yes.
And these plans were either prepared by you or under your supervision?
Yes.
We'll mark them as A3 for the site. A3, perfect. So, Mr. Ludas, as you go through your testimony, if you can just refer to the sheet number. And could you start by identifying the site and the existing conditions?
Yes, as discussed, the site is located at 1891 A Long Hill Road in Millington. It is a, what I would say, a secondary property of the Volunteer Fire Department. It is identified as, on sheet Z1, as block 12304, Lot 1. It is bounded at the northeast by the Crescent, and then by the northwest Commerce Street, a paper street here. And then the railroad tracks here to the southerly direction. As mentioned, it's basically an ancillary property of the fire department. There's a three-bay garage there, building. It's referred to as a pole barn. Verizon is proposing to locate a new 100-foot monopole with a four-foot lightning rod on the site, just to the southwest of the existing building. And then place their equipment in the building, taking up some of the space of that existing garage. We can have a little bit of a blown-up site plan view on sheet C1 of Exhibit A3. You can see said proposed monopole here, located just adjacent to the existing building that I mentioned. Verizon is proposing to place a 13-by-21-foot compound with a fence around it. In the exterior area, they're proposing a diesel generator for backup power in the event of a power outage or severe weather interruption to their service. They do have a utility backboard proposed here to basically support their electric meter. They're proposing to run electric service from the nearest transformer from the power company to that location, and then service their equipment that way through utility easement. There will also be a telco attachment where they will provide fiber telecommunication backhaul to the site via similar utility easement. And then, as mentioned earlier, the equipment which will power and service the site at the base station will be located in the existing building. I believe there was a question earlier from the board about whether or not that equipment might impact other fire department property or other assets there. That room will ultimately be designed to be in accordance with the NFPA 76 requirements for fire protection for telecommunications facilities within that space. And within that space, there will be, like I said, serviceable equipment for the base station. Racks of equipment, electronics components that'll feed the antennas up at the top of the pole. And then, as earlier discussed, the RAD Center, Radiation Center of 95 feet above ground. That's where the antennas will be placed, or proposed to be placed on the monopole. They'll be mounted on mounting frames, possibly a platform or T-arms to support the antennas and the radios. They'll be up at that elevation, mounted to the structure. The proposed structure itself will be a steel monopole, made of structural steel, bolted to a concrete foundation. Concrete foundation will be a caisson-type foundation, drilled shaft. They'll drill into the ground, place rebar, place concrete, and support the structure. That pretty much sums it up. Otherwise, as you can see on the C1 sheet, there is a area of this parcel, I believe there was a comment in the engineer's report that I reviewed earlier today, and a question about that area. It does appear that Verizon has decided to lease this area of the property itself, although the proposed deployment and development is relegated to that 13-by-21 exterior compound, plus the utility backboard and the interior space within this first bay of the garage.
And, Mr. Ludas, before you move on, do you have the bulk requirements on Sheet C1?
There are, yeah. The bulk zoning requirements here for Sheet C1, and hence, part of the reason we're here is we are requesting variance for some of the setback requirements. You can refer to this, I won't drone on any longer on that, but you can refer to that table for more detailed information and see that one of the main variants here for that front yard setback is being requested here as it is required to be 25 feet per the bulk ordinance. And we are proposing approximately 10-foot setback from that lot line.
And that's, that's from the Commerce Street front yard, correct?
Correct.
And that's the, well, partially improved gravel street?
Yes, or paper street, as it's referred to.
Paper street. In between the pole barn and the actual fire department, correct?
That's right.
So the front yard setback variance is not to the Crescent?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, are you showing the setbacks from the tower itself to the property lines?
We are, yes. Not each and every one of them, but most of them.
There was some testimony early, or some comments earlier about how far the tower is to, I'm going to call it.
I guess it would be the southeast property line?
Yes.
That's the property line that's adjacent to the residential zone, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you have the measurement from the tower to that property line?
I do. I have it in my notes here. I wrote that down earlier today. I believe. Yeah, when I measured that earlier today. Actually, yeah, the proposed monopole, so the center point of the proposed monopole, which would be indicated by this crosshair here in the circle, is approximately 65.5 feet perpendicular to the nearest residential property line, to the southeast.
Okay.
Is that Block 12304, Lot 2? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you also have an elevation view or, or the equipment view, whatever you'd like to do first?
Yeah, we have an elevation view. Kind of, this is another even further blown-up view of the site. Everything that I've explained is depicted here, just in a little bit more larger scale. One thing I didn't mention, the cable bridge, or as it's referred.
Mr. Ludas, I'm sorry, just to interrupt. This, you're referring now to Sheet C2 in the plan set, correct?
Yes, Sheet C2 of the plan set here. You can see the monopole, you can see the proposed generator here. The cable bridge, or ice bridges that's sometimes referred to, is where the cable is routed as it comes out of the monopole and into the building. And then you have the equipment, two racks, and maybe a future rack if Verizon needs it. Battery HVAC units, OVP, overvoltage protection. Couple other components that Verizon typically would install at their cell sites here. And then an elevation view to depict the profile of what the pole would look like and the site would look like. You can see the existing garage building here, and then the ground compound, and the 100-foot monopole with a four-foot lightning rod, and those mounts at the 95-foot elevation. Note, they would be oriented in about 120-degree opposed azimuths to make the full circle, as the RF engineer mentioned earlier.
And are you showing six-panel antennas in three sectors?
This actually is, yes, it is showing six-panel antennas, two per sector.
And are there also two GPS antennas that will be affixed to the existing barn?
Yes, there's GPS units to be attached here at the existing structure.
And approximately how large are those GPS antennas?
They're pretty small. They're maybe 12 inches long and 3 inches in diameter.
So in your opinion, will most of the equipment being proposed be located inside the existing barn?
Yes, the equipment will be located in the barn with the exception of the generator and the antennas and radios themselves.
Could you talk to the fencing that's around the, the equipment? I think what's being proposed now is seven foot with one foot barbed wire, is that correct?
Yes, there's currently chain-link fence proposed in the conceptual plan, although there's been commentary regarding fence types from various professionals with the town, and something that is certainly subject to further review and design.
So that fence could be changed to an opaque fence, whether it's PVC or something else?
Yes.
If the board preferred?
Yes.
And also, the height of that fence can also be reduced to seven feet?
It could be, yes, we can specify the fence to really any height desired.
And how tall is the proposed generator roughly?
The proposed generator sits on a diesel tank. I'd have to double-check the total height. With the enclosure in the tank, it may be about six, six and a half feet tall.
So whatever fence Verizon proposes, we can make sure that the generator is, is screened from view?
Yes.
With respect to the circulation and the parking for this particular facility, could you give a little testimony on how that would work?
Sure, it's an unmanned facility. So basically, the only time somebody would be coming to the facility on behalf of Verizon would be routine maintenance. In the event that there was some sort of issue that was flagged, a tech would come to the site. And then, on top of that, maybe every month, a tech would come up to the site. So they would obviously come in a vehicle, they would park on the site for the time they were there and, and leave. The maximum demand on parking would be one vehicle at a time effectively for Verizon.
And is the area in front of the pole, or in front of the barn sufficient to park or for that technician visit?
Yes.
Will it cause any, or interrupt any site circulation on the existing Commerce Street?
No, it should have a negligible impact on the circulation at the site.
Will the site also have to be visited to refuel the generator?
Yes, theoretically. The generator will only run in emergency situations. I looked at the calculations earlier. I think it can run for a maximum of about 56 hours on the fuel provided, 147 gallons. So in a very extreme event, they would run that generator and then they would refuel it after it was used on demand, basically.
And would that fuel truck be your, your typical home oil-style truck, about that size?
Yeah, similar to a fuel-oil delivery service, yeah.
Probably similar to the business that's right down the street, I would assume?
It might even come from there, yeah.
There is a fuel service business on this Commerce Street, correct?
There is, yes.
Okay, well, at least the rear of it.
Yeah.
So with respect to, I guess, staying on the generator then, could you talk about testing, how often, how long?
Yeah, so when the generator is first installed, they will commission the generator. So there's a more or less intensive test where they run it for approximately four hours at full demand. That's a one-time test. And then, once that's complete, Verizon's network standards, to my latest knowledge, don't actually specify a requirement. But it's my understanding, based on the local folks here, they'll test it about one hour every month, just to ensure that it's in working order in the event of a storm or outage.
And could that test be set to run during the day, not, not early in the morning, but late at night?
Yes, the techs will typically come to do that during the day, and it'll be about a half-hour to one-hour timeframe.
Could you speak to the noise levels from the generator and whether, whether it will be compliant with state noise standards and local noise standards?
Yes, the generator is proposed to be installed in an aluminum sound level 2 enclosure by the manufacturer. Their testing shows that the noise level at a distance of 23 feet from the source is 65.7 decibels. The state regulations for New Jersey would specify during normal hours of, a limit of 65 at the property line. And the nearest property line is approximately 40-plus feet from the generator point.
And is that decibel requirement actually to the closest residential property line?
It is, yes.
And you've already testified to what that distance is?
Yeah, that nearest distance would be the 65 feet plus about 10, so approximately 75 feet to the generator.
So based upon the specifications for the generator proposed, is it your opinion that it will operate within the state and local noise standards?
Yes, it is.
With respect to the safety, the safety features of the generator, is this a double-walled tank?
Yes, the base tank is a double-walled tank in accordance with, I believe it's UL 142.
So if the interior tank were to spring a leak, there is another tank to contain it?
Yeah, it has a built-in secondary containment unit as a design feature.
Is there going to be any vibration from the site as a result of the generator?
There should not be. I've reached back out to the manufacturer to confirm. Oftentimes, generators are installed on vibration attenuators, and we've specified that many times on designs for Verizon in the past. This is a newer generator product. They do kind of update every year or two years. So just reaching out as we speak to coordinate how we would properly specify that and if it's appropriate for the given model and the, the base tank. But assuming that that's acceptable per the manufacturer, yes, we will design and specify it that way.
And currently, it's being proposed on a 4-by-7 concrete pad?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, with respect to lighting, is there any lighting associated with this facility? Exterior lighting?
No exterior lighting is proposed. At a maximum, there may end up being a exterior light proposed for the generator access itself. If so, that would be a timed light that the technician would be able to turn on in the event of a storm in the darkness. And it would time, be on a timer to turn off automatically so that if it was left on, it wouldn't be left on for longer than a set period of time.
With respect to signage, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, FCC as well as Verizon have standard and required signs to denote the site, and those will be mounted on the compound fence in plain sight.
Were you currently not proposing any landscaping at the site, is that correct?
Correct.
Could landscaping be added if deemed necessary by the board or its professionals?
Yes, it could be.
From your view of the site, is there existing foliage and trees around the perimeter that provides screening?
Yes, there's a pretty significant amount of vegetation, trees, shrubs. I would assume, you know, the most important area to buffer would be to the, to the southeast there, to the adjacent residential properties, so that could be a consideration. To the south, the train tracks, I'm sure they're not wanting a buffer too much.
And then, with respect to utilities, will there be telephone and fiber service?
Yes, telco fiber service through the utility easement, as well as power to that H-frame that I mentioned, just to the northwest of the generator there.
Any permanent employees at the site to run this facility?
No, it's an unmanned facility.
Just going back to some of the variances and the waiver requests and the application, the front yard setback is currently in existing non-conforming condition, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's to, from Commerce Street to the existing barn building?
Correct, yes. This is the closest point on the plan view of the existing barn. It is approximately 10 feet from the property line along Commerce Street with a required front yard setback of 25 feet.
And the proposed fenced exterior equipment area is approximately how far from the Commerce Street front yard?
It is approximately 10 feet as well.
Okay, so that will not be exacerbating it?
No.
There is one utility box that's being proposed, correct? There is one utility box that's being proposed, correct?
Yes, if you're referring to the fiber box there, I believe that's what you're referring to?
Yes. And that's approximately nine feet from the front property line?
Give or take, yes, maybe eight feet.
So that would be the only incursion into the additional incursion into the front yard?
Yes.
There is a variance for accessory structures separation, 10 feet from the principal building on the same lot is required where the monopole and the generator are within 10 feet, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Was thinking to try to keep the tower and generator as close to the building as possible to screen it from view?
Yes.
And also to be close enough to the equipment that's in the building to connect with it?
Yes.
There was also a variance noted, 75 feet is required from any residential zone whereabouts, 73 feet is proposed to our generator comm, our generator pad, so that is a two-foot variance. Given the noise specs that you testify to, do you think there's any detrimental effects to the granting of that variance based upon the projected noise from the generator?
No, the noise from the generator will be well within the required limits.
This particular facility will be monitored on a 24/7 basis by Verizon?
Yes, there's remote monitoring sensors that will provide the Verizon technician signals to attend to the site or really give them any clue to any needs on the site.
And respect to traditional site plan issues such as traffic, water, sewer service, none of those are going to be an issue with this unmanned facility, is that correct?
That is correct.
Will the facility result in any odor, smoke, glare, or dust or any nuisance?
Nope, the only thing would be the exhaust from the diesel generator when it's running in emergency or test situation.
Any need for municipal services?
No.
Will the facility, if approved, comply with all building codes and EIA, TIA standards?
It will.
And will Verizon submit a full structural report to the building department and also to the board engineer if this facility were approved?
Yes.
So from an engineering perspective, is it your opinion that this site can accommodate the additional use?
Yes.
Thank you, no further questions.
I have a question for you. We heard a question earlier about, pardon me, Ms. Miguel's property being close to this project. Can you give me an idea of how close from the monopole, because it's not on the border of property, how close is the monopole from any local residential property?
Yes, so the monopole to the closest residential property line, which would be this line, that is the western property line of, by the tax map, 30-12304-0000-00002, approximately 65 and a half feet from that lot line to the monopole, to the center of the monopole. Additionally, that, it appears that there is a building on that site, maybe a three-car garage with a potential living quarter, I don't, I can't, I can't confirm that, but that's what it looks like from Google. The monopole is located 85.5 feet from the nearest point of said structure to the center of the monopole.
Thank you.
That would be this, the house to the northeast. I'll have to measure that. It is certainly longer than that distance, 75 feet.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I understand that the system, that the structure and the antennas aren't going to be powered by the diesel, that's nice, only in an emergency.
Yes.
It's going to be powered by electric. Where is the electric entering the site from?
So there's going to be a proposed utility easement. The actual source of power will come as a result of utility coordination with the electric company. Typically, it'll come from the nearest transformer or in worst case for Verizon, they may have to have a new transformer installed to get service to their site.
Coming from a transformer, okay. Which direction from the site?
I believe, again, this is all in preliminary design at this stage, however, I believe it should be coming from the direction of Commerce Street to the northwest.
To the west down Commerce Street, towards the parking area where Cargis is, or to the east towards Crescent?
So to the, to the, to the west and maybe a bit to the north in this, bless you, this area.
I haven't seen any electric poles near there, so I'm just wondering, how does the power get to that spot in the west?
It may come underground, it may come aerially. Again, it's subject to final utility coordination with PSENG in this case.
But through the fire department's land or through somebody else's land?
It'll be through an easement, so it'll travel through the right-of-way and then through an easement on this parcel.
I'm sorry, which is this parcel that you're pointing to?
The subject parcel, 1891A Long Hill, so the fire, the fire company's auxiliary land that we're proposing to put the site.
But there isn't an easement there, so the fire department has to give an easement?
Yes, there will be an easement with, with the fire department.
Why wouldn't that be part of this application?
Because we don't, we don't sign and record easements for a use that's not permitted yet, so we need to get the approval. The utility company won't even go out and look at the utility, bring in utilities until we have an approval. So that's why it's always subject to utility approval.
And the board could certainly explicitly state, assuming the board would act favorably on this application in any memorializing resolution, you could explicitly state that a condition of the approval before any building permit is issued, that, that easement be duly executed and recorded and it could be even subject to the review of township attorney, township engineer?
Yeah, I guess my concern is that they need an easement for their new approved project and it could go through somebody's front yard because they need it.
No, I mean-
If it's not planned for now, then you're going to plan for it later and it's going to-
But it's subject to the utility, the utility company dictates where they're coming, what pole to come off of. We don't dictate to the utility company.
Yeah.
So odds are they'll come from the closest overhead pole.
An entity that's not even here today and talking about this will determine where the electric-
PSENG?
Yeah.
No, they're not coming, they're not coming to our hearing or any other hearing.
It's not going, such an easement would not go through a private property that would be compelled to record that easement. It wouldn't work that way.
Correct, we are, my firm, my personnel will be reaching out to coordinate the utility design once we get to that phase of the project. The utilities will run down the right-of-way and then Verizon will secure a utility and access easement from the right-of-way along this property to the point they need it. That's what we would anticipate at this time.
Considering the time, it being 10:30, I'm going to request a motion to extend this meeting for 20 minutes for any additional questions from the board.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sir?
We want to finish his testimony, right?
Yes.
Tonight, like the current presenter, the engineer, can we just have the motion go till the end of that?
It could be till 12.
Well, okay, because-
We could always re-up it after the 20 minutes.
Fine, because we continue to re-up, it seems like, so either cut it off at 11 or finish it out, because we always finish it out anyway.
We might be done before that.
Okay.
Can I get a motion for 20 minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Just one other thing I failed to mention while we're on it, if I can ask Mr. Lutus, this pole will be designed, if the fire department wants to move its municipal communications to it, this pole will accommodate it, is that correct?
Yes.
I have questions. So are you part of the search people or the people that locate the site? Or you just do the engineering once the site is determined where it should-
Yeah, the site acquisition people are part of my company, but no, I have nothing to do with that, basically they hand it off.
Will we speak with that person?
Yes.
We will talk to that person?
Yes, so we will.
Okay, then the only thing I have for you, and it's really not one of my pressing, but can you just talk about the structural integrity of a 100-foot monopole? I mean, I know the power company's been putting them everywhere, right, we see them everywhere, but just, can you just talk about that? You know, the reason why I'm not worried about it, but I have little concerns, we lost the communications tower during Superstorm Sandy and it was, thank goodness, way away from homes and residents. So just want to see how that, talk about the structural integrity and then say, what happens if something really bad happens? Like that thing comes down in a storm or something?
Of course, yeah, so a steel monopole for telecommunications purposes is designed in accordance with the TIA 222 standard. It's a structural-
So just talk to us like we're regular people.
I'm going to give you the background of what it is.
Okay, that's fine, too. You can do the technical stuff, but also say what it means.
I'll tell you a story about it, so it's, it's a structural standard, how we design and analyze these things. I myself have even contributed to the development of these standards, revisions of these standards over the years. It dictates to us every specification of how to check the steel in accordance with building codes themselves. Basically, though, the steel monopole is just that, it's a steel shaft. Typically, it's made up of several segments that are lap spliced together. I can just kind of give you a quick rundown of how they would build it. So they would come out to the site and they would come out with a drill, they would drill the shaft for the case on. Usually something like 100-foot pole, depending on the soil conditions, might have anywhere from a 40 to 60-foot deep shaft for concrete. They would fabricate a rebar cage to reinforce that case on. Steel and the concrete is there for tensile resistance and bending capacity. So they'll place that cage, they'll pour that concrete, they'll place that concrete and they'll set the anchor rods in so that the steel pole can be mounted. The steel pole, the bottommost section of the shaft will be shop welded to a base plate with holes for the anchor rods. They'll place that on leveling nuts, they'll tighten it down loosely, just like you're putting together IKEA furniture. You know, you don't quite put it together all the way. Then they'll drop the top, the top section and then probably 100-foot will have a third section. They'll splice that on, drop them on there. Then once everything is good and plumb, they'll tighten the anchor rod nuts really tight and they'll be able to, you know, run the cables up the shaft, they'll be able to place the mounts, they'll be able to put the antennas, the radios, all the equipment up there. It's also equipped with a lightning rod and a full grounding system designed to the latest, the latest grounding specifications in accordance with the TIA group that I just mentioned earlier. Yeah, as far as the integrity goes, it's just designed to factors of safety, basically, essentially. We designed to load resistance factor design, so not typically factor of safety, but a very comparable system where we take factors for increasing the loads and the demands on the structure and we also take in account for reductions in the strength of the, of the numbers and we marry that together to make conservative estimates as to the theoretical capacity of the, of the structures. Something that's very important for steel monopole structures, they're single, non-redundant structures, right? So another very important thing that's come to light in the industry is the importance of fatigue design, especially at the base section where, the critical section where the base plate is welded to the monopole shaft. The latest version of that standard that I mentioned, that was just adopted recently, has specific provisions for fatigue analysis that are proven by, you know, decades of research driven by the ASHTO Committee on Bridge Structures. That has been kind of extrapolated and applied to these types of structures. So yeah, the industry is very focused on this. A cohort of my colleagues are going next Tuesday to meet with the entire industry to do the same thing all over again like we do every year. Revisit the code, revisit the standards. And yeah, in this case, new monopoles, we basically, you know, on behalf of Verizon, we go to one of the big three manufacturers of these things and they design it up and hand over a design. We look at it, say it's good, they put it out there and then as time goes by, every time the loading changes, we analyze it, we check it, we make sure that it's compliant with the codes.
So you talked about that connection, is that like, is that the most stress on that pole is right at that point?
At the base, yeah, that's where the most stress is going to be.
Is there ever, have you ever seen one of these things come down? I mean, is there-
I've never seen it, but I've seen stories of it, yes.
At your knowledge, has this ever happened?
Yes, it happens. Most of the time it would happen as a result of poor workmanship at that weld and the fatigue fracture.
Or a combination of fatigue at that stress point and severe weather, is that any impact on it?
The fatigue is just cyclical loading, so it'll just happen over time. It'll happen because oftentimes even at lower wind speeds where it induces just different phenomena that cause oscillatory motion and different, you know, you get into all the physics type of stuff.
So there's an inspection process you said that Verizon follows and then is there a replacement or is that followed with necessity determined by the inspection?
So the inspection process is going to be, effectively the owner of the asset is responsible to inspect and maintain the structure.
Is it Verizon or is it someone else?
Verizon's the owner of the pole, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Verizon would be then engaging in a routine maintenance and inspection cycle once the structure's put into service.
And that's regulated?
It is regulated, it is code prescribed for certain structures, for monopoles. I believe it's a recommendation, although Verizon does have a program that they actually do maintain and inspect their structures.
Thank you.
Just a simple clarification, how many mile per hour wind is this thing rated to withstand?
Typically, in this area, the design wind speed is around 115 or 113 miles per hour ultimate wind. That's the design wind speed that it's considered to be designed to somewhat, it's not, it's theoretical, it's not exactly what you expect, like, it's not like it's a sustained wind, but the numbers are based off of the data in the ASE, ASE 7 codes and we just follow the same standard that all engineers do for the country.
Any questions from our experts?
So you spoke a little bit based off of these questions about the construction of the monopole. Can you also speak to what equipment would be used for the construction of the monopole, where they might be located as well as possibly their swing radius and what that might impact in the surrounding area?
Sure, so there would be, as far as the larger pieces of equipment and machinery go, it would really be kind of threefold. There'd be a crane to lift the monopole, there'd be a drill rig to drill that case on, and there'd be a concrete truck to deliver the concrete and a pump truck potentially, depending on how they wanted to place that concrete. As far as the staging of the equipment goes, it would be really up to the contractor and their construction plan on how they would want to stage all the equipment. I would presume, because the street itself is not a very heavily traveled way, there would probably be a way to organize, potentially, again, subject to everybody that would have oversight the use of the street and/or of course, the use of this area of the rear yard. And that's again, something that if it gets to that stage, the contractor would be required to put, hey, a construction plan in place and obviously everything that they do in accordance with OSHA standards and all applicable laws and regulations.
And with that construction plan from your select contractor, you would review that as well as you would review that with the town?
So it depends, we're not always engaged as engineers to review construction plans, but that's something that we certainly can provide and Verizon's personnel and construction management staff would have oversight over that as well.
Okay, so it would be Verizon who might oversee construction, or is that-
That's correct.
Or Verizon's designee, like I can't speak to-
Yeah.
Yeah.
At construction determination, but Verizon as the applicant would notify the town who's going to be in contact?
Absolutely, yes. That's right, that would be Verizon's responsibility.
Kind of going back to your talk about it's an unmanned site, maintenance is going to be as needed, it sounds like. Has there been discussion with the volunteer fire department about the fact that it's going to be a sporadic visitation? And have they made any comment to the fact that it's a, you know, once-a-month situation where they would be coming to the site, visiting it? Or is that still needing a discussion with the fire department?
Right now, what's in place is, is a lease agreement with the fire department that provides for the leased area and 24/7 access to that leased area. So that, that's all I know. I don't know about discussions with the fire department as to, you know, I don't know how many trips or things of that nature. But according to the testimony, the trip should so, somewhere be in the nature of once every four to six weeks. So it's, it's not going to be visited very often. In fact, I mean, the fire department, they did provide us a letter, so I might as well mark this in evidence as.
That would be A4.
A4, thank you. This is a letter dated October 31st, 2025. It's, was addressed to Verizon from Mr. Patrick White, who's the chief of the fire company, and it kind of relates to the fact of the communications that we talked about for the fire company potentially one day being on the pole. So I would just, I would just mark this in the record. I can get, I can get additional copies to everybody for the next hearing, I'll email it. All right.
And just to speak to the Verizon operations, typically, they have cell techs that are assigned to specific sites, and those techs will establish rapport with the local contact at the site to, you know, they, they work well together typically, and what, from what I've observed.
So we kind of touched base, it sounds like the lease agreement, we touched base about the lease agreement that's in the works and that's still pending, I guess, negotiations as well as.
That's signed, right, the lease? The lease is signed, yeah, that was my understanding.
Has there been any sort of licensing agreement for Commerce Street in terms of the fact that it's a paper street and it is not up to the standards of the town in terms of the developed street for access?
All we have at this point is, is just the access rights from the lease agreement to access the property. That, that's all we have.
What I'd just ask, would that be considered at a, I guess, as part of this application, should the board go basically on the application?
Yeah, I mean, if a licensing agreement was required separate and apart from the, from the fire department, we would, we would obviously enter that agreement. If it's required from the town, then we'd have to enter into that agreement as well. But it is a paper, it is a paper street, it is on the tax map, so presumably, it could be utilized by the general public for access.
Right. I'm just thinking a licensing agreement may be, I'm just thinking a licensing agreement may just be necessary prior to construction, given the, as we've discussed, size of the equipment that's going to be coming to the site and the fact that you're talking about a paper street that is not developed, might not be able to handle the loads and/or complications can arise because it's construction.
Yeah, it's not something that sounds objection, we'll put it that way, so it's, it's definitely, if, if the application were approved and that was deemed advisable, then I'm sure Verizon would, would, you know, would enter into agreement like that, you know, subject to the terms, of course.
I think at this time I have no further questions.
Thank you.
One question, one question I have with the lease. Is there, are you at liberty to say how long the length of it is, like, and if, if for any reason it was ever terminated, what happens to the tower?
I have not seen this particular lease, but I can tell you, just doing this for 25 years, generally speaking, these leases are anywhere from 20, 25 years. And about every lease I have seen has provisions in it where Verizon is responsible for decommissioning all the improvements and restoring the property back to, you know, its original condition, you know, minus ordinary wear and tear.
Okay. And I, I think there was testimony, I think perhaps not from you, but the garage, obviously, is going to be holding the, sort of the ground equipment to service the tower. And that if an additional, if there was a co-location situation, there's room for more in the, in the garage?
Theoretically, there would be room inside the garage. I think that potentially, there could be room outside as well. I can't speak to future plans nor the fire company's amenability to, I mean, from when we went to the site, they had some old fire trucks in there, some old equipment, I'm sure they probably need that space, but that's not really my place to make a judgment call there.
Okay. And then landscaping, I, I just, I have made a few comments in my letter for the board's consideration. I don't think that it, it's not going to address the residents' direct concerns about health, but I think that you may want to ask the applicant to put some sort of evergreen buffer along that property line, just, just for screening, just visual screening.
We can add that as a condition.
I mean, if, if, if the applicant is amenable.
Yes, absolutely.
Are, are these going to be 100-foot long? How tall trees?
Are we talking about everything now or just engineering? Because are we talking, is that a great?
Speaking about the fencing and the border.
Well, I did, I, he, they addressed, yeah, but I.
What about lighting, too? Because didn't you have concerns about lighting as well?
I did, they.
Did they address them? I'm sorry. I missed a step here.
No, it's okay.
Because I have concerns about lighting, too, sorry.
So his testimony about lighting said that, lighting is going to be a, and correct me if I'm wrong, please. No lighting is planned for the site at this time, however, there is going to be, except for, an exterior light by the generator, which is a timed light. So it's just for the emergency where it's going to need to access the generator, is when they're looking for this light to be used.
Thank you.
Correct.
Actually, that's a question, is that there's no light at the top of the tower?
No, the tower is not required to be lit in this case.
Okay, so, yeah, but landscaping, I think, is.
I think we need a landscape plan, actually, like some kind of, I think we do.
Okay, okay.
I have a question that this triggers, and I'm not sure if you're the right person to answer it, or perhaps we'll get it later. We've all seen those lovely monopoles along the highways that kind of look like trees with the greenery on top. Is that something that can be accommodated here if it was so desired by the township?
I mean, it's, it's certainly something we can investigate. You usually, to be honest, you usually don't see 100-foot poles done, done as trees, so.
We can have a tree lighting.
We can come back with that answer. Usually, you see that kind of stealth structure on a, on a taller tower. But we can, we'll come back with a concrete answer.
Just some greenery to take to break up that tower look so that it's, it fits a little bit better with the area.
Yeah, so, sure.
And if there may be interference with the, the signal, then that's not something we're looking to do.
Well, what's going to happen at the next meeting is we are going to have our planner to go through the photo simulation, so we will, we will look into that before, between now and the next meeting.
Mr. Aronia, do you want them to bring a sort of schematic landscaping?
I think that would be appropriate.
If I, if I can just make a request, and obviously, by all means, usually what we agree to do is we agree to work with your board professionals to come up with a, you know, an acceptable landscape plan, rather than us guess at it. We, we, a lot of times, we just collaborate as a condition of approval to come up with a plan.
We do that as well. I just thought, in this case, because I think the residents that are in close proximity are going to want to see something, I, I believe that, I don't know, I can't. I'm fine with delegating, but.
Then if you can give us a little direction, well, if you just did, I guess, of where you'd like to see it, so.
Yes, yeah, and I, I think if you maybe have further discussions with myself and the board engineer prior to next meeting.
Okay.
Are we talking about two different things, landscaping and then what the actual pole looks like?
Yes, those are two different things.
Okay, just want to make sure that that's not a collaboration with the engineer, that's, that's part of the site design.
No, the landscaping is what do we think is going to be adequate to help screen and buffer from surrounding properties?
Just to manage expectations, the board would see what the pole looks like, but the engineer would see what the landscaping looks like.
Well, no, what we said is that they're going to, we are going to have discussions before the next meeting so that they can present it to the board.
Okay.
So the reason why I was thinking about a plan is because I've seen this before also, where we approve these towers or whatever else, and then three years later, there's four dead arborvities that are like around the tower, and they don't belong there, they weren't, you know, they, they don't fit with that area, and they don't live well there. So as long as it's something that, that is appropriate for that area and it's well nurtured and it's going to survive, then I'm fine. I don't mind delegating that, but I, I just have a feeling that our, our residents in that area are going to want to see what's, what's screening their view from the base of that tower.
Sure, and that's why I want to consult with your, you know, your local professional, because they can steer us in the right direction.
Thank you, we're to that witching hour again. Can I see a show of hands, how many questions we have? One, two, three, more than we're going to be able to get to tonight, unless we stay till midnight. At this point, I believe we're going to have to close the proceedings for this evening. Deb, what would our next date be?
Tuesday, December 16th.
Okay, December 16th.
Carry to that date, Mr. Chairman, December, carry to December 16th?
Yes, without further notice.
Without further notice, okay.
And would you just put in writing that you consent to an extension of time for the board to act on the application?
Yes, I will do that, thank you.
Would you need a motion and a second and an all-in?
Motion to adjourn?
No, wait, we have to have a motion first to carry the application.
Oh, carry the application, I thought you wanted a motion.
I'll move to carry the application to December 16th.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now can I make a motion to adjourn?
Now you can make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.